Affirmative votes, zero nay votes and zero absent. We move on to item 12A under Presentations of Ordinances, Resolutions and Petitions. Oops, forgive me, we first have to pay the bills. Sorry, Mr. Clerk. Number 10 is municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to make up the bills to be paid.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The public may find all the excruciating details of that aggregate number on the city website in our packet for tonight.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented and invites all residents and anyone interested in reviewing the excruciating details to check out the city's website. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions other than those were asked earlier regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Aladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Item number 10 passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero absent, zero nays. Now item 12A, folks. Consider approval of resolution number 2019-73 establishing basic development parameters to be used in preparing a redevelopment plan for the Mill Race site located at 4 East State Street and 12 East State Street and authorizing Hitchcock Design Group to begin the entitlement process as outlined in the professional services agreement entered into on April 18th, 2019. Is there a motion? Motion by Kilburg, seconded by Marx. Mr. McCready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 15th, 2019, the City Council passed a resolution approving a tax increment financing agreement between the City of Geneva and the Shodin Family Foundation for planning charret and entitlement project related to the redevelopment of the former Mill Race Inn property. The charret was conducted between June 24th and June, between June 24th and June 27th, 2019, and at the conclusion of that charret, the local team recommended a redevelopment strategy. If the city desires to move the project forward to the entitlement phase, it would need to establish some basic development parameters to work within. The city would be responsible for the entire bill incurred to date if it does not desire to move the project forward to the entitlement phase. Thank you.
Item 12A is on the floor. We, as typically do, we're going to ask for a presentation by the charret group. Following that presentation, we will entertain comments or questions from the audience. Just a reminder to the audience members, please direct your questions to the chair. Following those questions, we will ask the council members to share any questions or comments they might have to either Mr. Hitchcock, his team and/or City of Geneva's professional staff. Welcome, Mr. Hitchcock.
Good evening, Mayor, Aldermen and Women and Geneva. My name's Rick Hitchcock, President Hitchcock, or gosh, how quickly I forget, former President Hitchcock Design Group, founder and still chairman of the board anyhow. Here this evening with our charret team, Dan Kim, our project manager, maybe just wave your arm so they know who you are, Dan, and Bridget Lane, Business Districts, Inc., and John Wills, WBK Engineering, and Mike Brecklaw from Fitzgerald Associates Architects. Let's see here. What's the best way to advance this? Use the mouse or use the keypad? Page down? There we go, that's going to work. Great to be in front of you this evening. The action, of course, that we're asking you to take is to adopt the resolution which gives us the green light to continue the process. Sorry, the aspect ratio is goofed on this, though everything is sort of stretched out like a funhouse a little bit, but you get the idea. You'll recall that the engagement purpose is to produce a consensus redevelopment strategy and to, we hope in a fairly short time, actually get something entitled and permitted and constructed. It's important to know, while some of you or some of us may all feel somehow a little discouraged that we don't have full consensus yet on what that strategy is, that somehow the process has not been successful or that the charret was not successful. In fact, I would say that it was very successful in that it did exactly what we wanted and got a lot of material compressed into a very short period of time, and we are certainly not done with the engagement yet, and I'm very encouraged about the prospects of completing the engagement in a way that satisfies both sponsors. This slide, I think, helps to illustrate that process. Again, I've got to find what, oh, here we go. We did the opportunity analysis and, of course, that last week of June, a long week, and thank you very, very much for your thoughtful participation. We had four, speaking of excruciating, we had four very long days which were jam-packed with information, and as this, actually this evening marks the end of this particular phase of the project, and we hopefully are on to the entitlement phase, which includes a lot more work. We are far from finished. There's a terrific amount of technical analysis. We have to finalize an implementation strategy, finalize all of the development plans, create our presentation exhibits, and there's a series of meetings. We've assumed probably at least two each, but who knows, there may be more, with Historic Preservation, Planning Commission and City Council before we get to the end of this entitlement process, which we think is more or less in October, but we'll see how that goes. As you'll recall, at the beginning, we were looking at three different dimensions that relate to the property, what's going on with the vast array of resources, what's going on in the marketplace, and what's going on with all of the various stakeholders. I'm not going to read all of this to you. This is on the website in the opportunity analysis in much more detail, but suffice it to say that this slide summarizes some of the highlights, I guess, or the most pertinent highlights, including that it's a small site, tremendous river frontage, kind of an important location. We've all, I think that's why we're all here. The site slopes, there's a small amount of flood plain, there's no floodway, that's really important, land's vacant except for some commercial right at the corner. There's a whole host of infrastructure pieces that are all important, not the least of which is that it's close to Metro, which we think is very important. Architecturally, there's only a couple structures on the site. One is the old structure, the consignment shop and the bicycle place at the corner, and the stone structure, which is the landmark structure, which has some stability challenges. Culturally, of course, we've got the Fox River and the Fox River Trail and all those memories from Mill Race Inn and the landmark structure, all, again, I think that's, that's why we're all here tonight, is because of these things. And importantly, there's a TIF in place, and I think I've got the date right on this, it expires in 2039 or thereabouts. The market summary, and Bridget Lane is our market expert, and any questions that you may have, she can address way better than I can, but in short, there's challenges with restaurants in this marketplace. Similarly, there's some challenges with retail. Residential is a, is a strong market. The renters by choice, whether you like that cliche or not, it describes a cohort of folks who are young and old, who are choosing to rent, you know, not because they have to because they can't afford anything else, but rather because they find it to be a desirable option, and to be sure, there's lots of premiums associated with amenities like water trails and transit. This market, and by market, I'm talking about sort of the geography more, is characterized by some pretty low density, really far lower than a lot of comps that we might look at, and there's some high income rings around that, which are useful. The mix is noteworthy. About 6% of the property in the market places in this surrounding market is vacant. About 15% of it is related to food and beverage. 24% of it related to retail, which is pretty small, and all of the rest is related to service businesses like insurance companies and so on, and government uses, which is a big percentage. Whoops, I didn't mean to, sensitive mouse, there we go. It's impossible to characterize somehow the interests of all of the stakeholders, but starting at the top, and if you'll think about those rings that we drew for the stakeholder group, right at the, right in the center of that is the owner. The owner has conveyed to us and reaffirmed what's important to them is financial viability, making a significant contribution to the well-being of the community, and taking a long-term perspective. Government has conveyed to us that they're interested in consensus, again, why we're here. They view this as a gateway site, potentially catalytic, and of course, by definition, code compliance is part of government expectations. Commercial and residential tenants have different interests, but long and short of it is, is the commercial folks want high exposure and big demographics, the residential folks want goodies and action, entertainment. Special interests, it's a long, long list. There's folks who are interested in the landmark structure, folks who are interested in the river, folks who are interested in cycling, it goes on and on, downtown, et cetera. And residents, again, impossible to characterize the interests of all of the residents of Geneva, it'd just be preposterous to somehow suggest that. But what we did here with a lot of consistency was frequent visitors too and very happy with downtown. Of course, the fond Mill Race Inn memories came up a lot. There was kind of a surprising lack of use of the river and the Fox River Trail, which was interesting. We didn't want to read too much into that, but we thought it was noteworthy. Lots of mention of restaurant uses, so I like to tease about the community likes to eat, or at least to eat out, and to be sure, there's some interest in saving or reusing the landmark structure. Things that we heard in the one-on-one interviews with many of you, virtually all of you, and with many other key stakeholders, we heard things about pedestrian friendliness and viability and flooding and how to define success, and again, I'm not going to recite all these, but we heard this from sort of that next ring of stakeholders, and we listened very carefully to that. We also heard from the workshop, this was the Monday evening workshop, we heard a number of concerns, and the reason that we didn't lose track of our point, our place here, we just, we had some things that were tied. These are prioritized based on the number of times we heard these things about pedestrian friendly access, attractiveness, defined different ways, sustainability, uses, everything, right on down to sensitive to the neighbors. And again, it's not like we took this to heart and had to like nail each one of these from a priority standpoint, but we're very mindful of all of this interest in aggregate. You may be sick of this by now, but it seems like it's important to stay on message, and what we developed as a result of the community survey, the individual interviews and the Monday workshop, we came up with a list, our list, but editorialized from those, all of that activity, of what we called the Mill Race Planning Criteria. And we said, we set it on, all day on Tuesday, and again Wednesday night, and again on Thursday. Everything that we do going forward, this is our report card. We've got to check the boxes and make sure that we're doing these things because this is what we've collectively said defines our success. Now, of course, as we got into the details, and I, you know, right at the top of the list, A is for attractive. What's attractive to me and attractive to you and attractive to you and you and you and you and so on and so on, and I dare say everyone in the room, this might be, we might be here till Christmas trying to define that, but what we've done our best is to define it this way. What's attractive, what we understand to be attractive to the community, and again, to the sponsors in particular, is a high amenity riverfront, including distinctive features, art, lighting, landscaping and seating, complimentary residential building scale and mass setback to frame the river and downtown with a corner storefront, seasonal riverfront pop-ups, stepped-back roofline, concealed parking, authentic materials and facade detailing. Again, we could take turns debating the details of this, but we, we hope that you think that this is close. The words, by the way, in blue on the left were the words that we talked about publicly, and this, this wordier text is what we defined subsequently, that we, that we wanted to be able to come back to again and again. Connected, what does this mean? Multiple pedestrian and cyclist connections between the development, river, streets, bridge and Fox River Trail, uncompromised traffic impacts on existing streets, convenient multiple motorist ingress and egress points to provide, excuse me, to private parking, and convenient on-street public parking. Now, mind you, we don't have guarantees on any of this, especially when we're talking about on-street, because this is an I dot street, so this, this is our definition of success. It may not be I dot's definition of success. Catalytic, again, we could talk, we could wrestle with this quite a while, but we, we define it as that the building generates significant, by building, we're talking about the structure, the primary structure on the site, generates significant non-project TIF increment, that's the tax increment, financing increment, that fully funds the new riverfront improvements and provides funding for other TIF-eligible expenses in the district. Maybe it's a sewer improvement, or maybe it's a deal that needs a little gap help to get off the ground. The new private development and public riverfront improvements collectively generate momentum for additional private investment in the neighborhood, or more accurately said, in the district, but maybe synonymous. Financial sustainability, that the building performance relies primarily on market-supported, which is really residential uses. Storefront and seasonal retail are self-sustaining. The building will generate substantial fees for the city, school and park districts, so everybody wins. The building will generate TIF increment to fully fund the riverfront construction costs, and again, many other expenses in the TIF-eligible expenses, and last and hardly least is that the building delivers some kind of reasonable return on investment for the owner. There have been a lot of questions sort of on and offline about, you know, is the, is the owner in the owner's equation, are they asking for something that's unreasonable? We went through a very extensive discussion with the owner and have agreed on a percentage that is kind of customary in the, in the development marketplace, and so that's what has gone into all of the calculations that we've made, and when, therefore, we presume what the, what the owner has made. Environmentally sustainable, you might think that this is a, you know, sort of an obvious thing, but what's really important is that the development location itself and the uses are inherently compact and walkable. It's a great site. In addition to meeting all the applicable standards, we want to make sure that we kind of go the extra mile, maybe with some green infrastructure and energy-efficient technologies. Cultural sustainability, this is a lot grayer, to be sure, I'll be the first to admit that. The building and the riverfront will attract diverse users and tenants showcasing or showcase Geneva's riverfront assets and incorporate local materials. So, yeah, you know, how do you define brand? We want in the future, it's just like, gosh, this feels like Geneva. The riverfront feature will reuse and interpret the stone from the landmark structure without a significant operational or financial burden on taxpayers. And respectful, again, at the end of the day, all of you, and I presume all of you and the rest of the community will judge whether the entire engagement has been respectful, but more importantly is that both the owner and all of the stakeholders, their, their interests are being considered, and it's an open and inclusive process, and it, it has to meet, kind of by definition, it has to meet the sponsors' expectations. Half of the sponsor is the owner, half of the sponsor is you, and so if the owner doesn't like what's going on and you don't like what's going on, we got nothing. If we can get everybody together, then we've got a project. Okay. I'm sorry that was windy, but seems like it was necessary. We went through a lot of work, some of which was sort of behind the scenes, but most of which was kind of out in the open, and one of the things that we pondered on Monday evening, June 24th, was what, is this a gateway? And if so, how do we, what, what does that mean? And we just kind of, just for perspective, really, we started to identify, you know, what is one floor, two floors, three, four, five, what do six floors look like on this site, and how does that relate to Geneva Place, which is kitty-corner from it at State and Bennett, which is a four-story structure, but it's a little uphill from that, and so if you're driving down the street, you know, what does that really look like? Can you kind of get an idea? And again, we heard over and over and over, it's not about the building, Rick, it's about the riverfront and our downtown framing that very cool view. And so one of the opportunities, honestly, in my oversight, I should have known better. Well, I love how Google decides it has to name everything, so it's a house with trees in the background. Sorry, but not quite right. One of the things that we failed to talk about on Wednesday evening was there is an option out there, which you might call the currently entitled option. This is in the B2 district, and given the FAR and the height and so on, this is what you can build. I'm sorry that little thing keeps popping up, that's super annoying, but anyway, this is what you can build on the site, right up to the setback lines, and you can see how it does or doesn't frame the view, but by right, you know, which means that the developer could submit his plans to your building department and bypass the HPC and Planning Commission and you all, go right to, right to construction permits and get his financing and go build something here. But, but instead, we're, we're looking at a more thoughtful process. What we all feel like is crucial is that the riverfront is the catalyst. You've got this wonderful corridor on Third and on State, and it kind of, it just doesn't jump the river. In fact, we think the riverfront can be, at the very least, an anchor or a node and promote lots more development in the vicinity and do some really terrific things. And very, again, kind of wordy, but seems important in the context of what everyone, what all of you are interested in, is in close collaboration with appropriate owners and agencies, so in other words, there's a lot of fingerprints on this, create a compelling riverfront attraction, which we define, that is multi-dimensional gateway to downtown, attracts residents and visitors for everyday socializing and special events, and stimulates investment in the area. We think that's important, and how do we do that? This is where we looked at a variety of options, and I won't go through each one of these in great detail, but the one which we called Eat Out was the restaurant footprint. Can we build a big format restaurant footprint on this site? And the answer is yes, we can, and there's a lot of surface parking, and we think that it's, we, really, the charret team doesn't like it for lots of reasons, not the least of which is that it's, if, if we all rallied around this, it would probably sit vacant for another five years, and if we could finally find the right tenant, it would have a negative impact on the TIF. It's a needy, it's a needy use, and it doesn't throw off anything for the riverfront or the rest of the TIF district, which we think is really a shame. We took a look at something which is basically townhomes along Bennett and keeping the existing structure and on the corner, and we called this Home on the Water. It produces a modest amount of increment, it does demand a little bit of assistance out of the gate, but we're just not excited about this as a catalyst, and this pretty much wipes out a public riverfront because townhome owners in this kind of arrangement simply aren't going to put up with the public in their backyard. Corner passage, and there was many layers of this, but this is the L shape or the hockey stick layout that is on the site, and it has a combination of apartments and townhomes on it, and in this particular iteration, about 117 apartments and about, where were the townhomes? Oh, seven townhomes, and parking concealed, a below grade, and the townhomes blocking that very public riverfront and a big, big increment that we thought might get thrown off from that. State and Bennett was really kind of an iteration of that minus the blade on the hockey stick, if you will, and it kind of opens up some views, but there's still sort of the unresolved issue about who owns and manages the, the landmark stone building. So anyway, we noodled over all of that, we got a tremendous amount of feedback from you through staff, which we greatly appreciate, and what we came up with on Thursday, we synthesized all that, and we said, okay, here's, here's our strategy. And I know to some of you, it looked like maybe we pivoted suddenly and became infatuated with the riverfront, where we had been focused strictly on the building, and as you'll recall from that previous statement about our strategy, we, we never took our eye off the riverfront, but we were just focused for the time being on Wednesday on the building site. But the strategy is a two-pronged strategy. Build a high amenity public riverfront attraction and build market-supported development to activate it, well, and fund it, frankly. And this is the, we called it the preferred strategy, wrong terminology at the time. This is the charret team preference, but this is, this is the one that we were using to, to think about, or we were trying to pitch this to all of you on Thursday evening in the public, and this has 116 apartments, eight townhomes, it's about 56 feet high, there's a few spaces on street, we're not sure if those are going to stick, but importantly, it, it, of course, it incorporates the I dot improvements at the intersection, it's got a big public riverfront, which we suggested could even extend to the other side of the bridge, but, you know, focused pretty much on, in this vicinity. And to be sure, the public riverfront, as all of this does, the public riverfront takes lots, lots, lots more discussion. We've got other owners who need to be represented at the table, namely Park District, probably a Kane County Forest Preserve District, certainly the state of Illinois. There's a lot of other people with an interest in this public riverfront, but it's a pretty elaborate, high amenity place that we think is one of those great, it's, it's got great synergy because it's something that attracts visitors, it's a great backdrop for the kinds of tenants and users that we think will populate this kind of environment, and in return, this kind of environment gives the riverfront energy. One of the things that we didn't talk about very much, and I wish I had, was we envisioned, we've got townhouses concealing parking on the west-facing, of course, north is to the left, but on the, on the west-facing facade, we've got these townhomes, but then on the south-facing leg, we've talked about having pop-up retailing or pop-up seasonal commercial uses, which would be completely self-supporting and we think could actually throw off some operational funding for riverfront maintenance. So there's really intriguing opportunity there, and it really gives the area a lot of energy. And so we went to score it using our criteria that we felt generally captured what, what we were hearing over and over. Is it attractive? In the top, the top right corner is what's entitled, and in the bottom right corner is the view of our preferred strategy. But it's a high amenity riverfront, it's complimentary building, we think it's scaled very attractively to Geneva Place, it's setback, and it tapers to the south so that it opens up a great view of the, of the downtown. So we, we think that it meets the definition of attractive, and to be sure, will it look exactly like this? Gosh, no, I, I'm quite sure that our architect, if he has more than two hours to work on this, can come up with something that's truly beautiful, and in fact, none of this is even illustrated as you get far And in fact, none of this is even illustrated as you get farther to the south. But it's, it's an opportunity to do something very lovely, but the, the building is set back and the roof line is stepped. I'm really sorry about this pop-up thing. Dan, remind me to figure out how to make that go away. But anyway, the roof line is staggered, so there's lots of rooftop terraces, great money shots of the river. We think it can be very, very attractive. It's connected. Multiple pedestrian and cyclist connections between the river, the streets, the trails at Oak, at State, coming off of Bennett, at the upper level, at the lower level, connected to the Fox River Trail, connected to the water. We think it's terrific. Again, the 17 spaces, John keeps warning me, don't fall in love with those spaces, Rick, but for the time being, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hope that they're gonna be there. Catalytic promotes this TIF district in a big, big way, throws off money that can fund other improvements, not the least of which is the riverfront. Financially sustainable, you think it checks the boxes. It's market-supported uses, small commercial storefront, seasonal commercial riverfront shops, as I mentioned, or pop-ups. Generates substantial local fees, generates substantial TIF increment, and provides a reasonable return for both sponsors. Environmentally sustainable, again, we think it's going to check the boxes easily. Culturally sustainable, it's going to attract desirable users and tenants, it's going to showcase the riverfront, it's going to interpret the landmark structure without an extraordinary burden on the tax-paying public, and we think it's going to have a very complementary building vocabulary. And lastly, it's been an open, inclusive process, and none of that's going to change. It has to, as I said, by definition, it has to meet the sponsors' expectations, so it's in your hands and Shodin's family's hands. It's got to meet the regulatory expectations, or we won't get permits. And it certainly has to consider other stakeholder interests. And so back again to where we kind of started, what's next? All of these pieces in some great detail. We haven't put together a calendar because we need your blessing to launch the next phase, but we will, upon your approval of this this evening, if you are so inclined, we will set sail on this work immediately. So the question is, can the sponsors, both of them, support a public river, a high amenity public riverfront attraction and a market-supported development? And as staff provided to you in your packets, this is simply a reiteration of that, can you support it with these parameters? Rental apartments up to 120 units, owned or rented townhouses, about eight to 12 units, about 2,000 square feet of commercial space or some kind of amenity space with outdoor feature. And I should have put in there also some pop-up commercial space, which is what I've captured in that second, or the last line, that there's all kinds of riverfront improvements, including the seasonal commercial space. Parking, 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit at a minimum, concealed, and no off-street parking required for the commercial. The bulk regulations, and I'm, and as you notice, we're, in fact, I'm going to go up one. In italics, we identified which of those planning criteria we felt like were checking the boxes. And on parking, as a, for instance, we didn't put catalytic because there is no catalytic value. We're not, we're not proposing to build excess parking so that it might trigger something immediately adjacent where public parking would be on the site. So we left it off that list. By comparison, on the bulk regulations, we think it checks all the boxes, very complementary to Geneva Place, 60-foot maximum height, we actually think it'll be less than that, the maximum, or the maximum allowed by special use PUD, 10 feet back from State Street, really at Bennett, and it increases the closer you get to the river. The articulated building roof line, which is probably just a dumb way of saying that it steps down, and, and the facade is also animated, and authentic materials, again, planner jargon, but we're talking about, you know, real stone, real wood, no drive it, that sort of stuff. Public riverfront access, something inviting at Oak, something inviting at State and Bennett, something inviting at the Fox River Trail. Again, we think it checks all the boxes. And lastly, as it relates to the landmark structure, we think that it can be all of these things. Our recommendation is that it would be deconstructed, demolished, but the important pieces of it saved and reinterpreted in some kind of a new feature that is structurally sound and is respectful about the place, the part that it played in the history of the riverfront. And that is it, and I'm happy to answer questions and however else, Mayor, however else you would like me to participate, or for the whole team for that matter, so.
Right. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, as customary that we often, or always rather, invite our audience members to provide any questions or comments. Pardon me? I trust that that customary practice will continue unless someone objects. Anyone from the audience wishing to ask a question, provide a comment, I invite you to the podium to do so. This gentleman had his hand up. This young lady did? Okay. All I ask is that you please state your first name, your last name, spell your last name, and please speak slowly so that we can capture your comments. And please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live.
Sure.
Thank you.
So my name is Lee Estelid, E Y S T U R L I D. I live on 108 Oak Street, one of the streets he mentioned. I live immediately across from the property. I have lived there for 18 years, over 18 years now, which I guess makes me, what do you call it, a founder or something like that?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I know, right? I've watched the property come and go and go up and down over the years, sometimes better, sometimes worse. It's been disappointing to see what's happened to it. But now I'm kind of in shock at the idea that we would go this far and this low. My mother actually went to the charrette, and she had a whole idea, she had a plan, she drew it out, I helped her. A week later, an email, we got four fully developed plans. So that either means the plan she gave them didn't matter, or within a week, they had architects draw up four very developed plans. So it seems to me that we're really playing at our three kind of buy-off plans or kind of, you know, kind of this is what we were thinking about, but in the end, there's the one plan. It appears to me there's only one plan. I have a whole series of questions, if you want to write them down, because then you could answer them. He talked about diverse users. What diversity are we talking about? Are we talking about racial? Are we talking about people with money? You said that the plans that don't exist are final, so this is not a final plan, but this plan might change radically. Might we come back to the restaurant, which I think most people might be okay with, as opposed to the fact that I will no longer see the river? No, will anybody else see the river? I would like to know what will happen to Oak Street? Something about accessing Oak Street? He talked about a really neat vision of Geneva. I assume he means that's for people coming in from the east and not for the residents. I talked about tremendous riverfrontage. I'm, at a shock, I've been on that piece of property a million times, I've been all over it with my two sons. There's about 120 feet there. I'd love to know where he's going to shoehorn all this stuff in, especially the parking, especially the parking on the street. I'd also like to ask, where will the school buses go? If there are 250 to 500 people in those apartments, there's 120 apartments, where will the school buses stop? Where will the school buses go? Where will the kids get off? Where is the sidewalk they're going to use? How will they have access back and forth? Are those 120 apartments paying taxes? Or am I going to pay for them to go to school? The millerist was destroyed, and that was the problem. That flooded constantly. Are they going to undergo a major revision of that prop, of that entire space as a flood problem? I can tell you that that only floods, it floods under the bridge. The road flooded out yesterday, to the point where cars can't come through. For 18 years, I've asked to have that flood piece fixed. I've gone down there with a rake to fix it. It hasn't happened yet. I guess Shodin will wave a wand and it'll suddenly come to pass. He said, "This feels like Geneva." I'd like to have him explain that better to me. Why would 120 part-time residents of Geneva suddenly become visitors to Geneva? Why are there visitors? Why is it a gateway if people live here? Why would it be drawn to Geneva if they're already living here? In other words, we're not drawing more people in. Once they live here, they live here. They're, they're in their apartments. He talked about visitors. Visitors would come if there was a restaurant there, perhaps. The idea of pop-up retail, so we'll have transient retail people in the building? Exactly what does it mean? Can you give me three or four examples of companies that would come and actually do that? Or does he mean food trucks parked there? And I would really like to know what he thinks the number of people are and what he, what they think the actual tax income would be. And as a resident for the last 18 years, I've seen a lot of great things, I've seen a lot of good development, I think people have really tried to make a good deal. I know we even, I can remember all the way back when the bakery that's there with the, with the wonderful mural, and they tried to do a good job with that, and it didn't work out, that was too bad, it was a nice little place. This is an immense disappointment.
Folks, let's, hold on, folks. Let's eliminate altogether any applauding, what have you. I will ask for, as I promised last week, if we continue with applause, or yays, or nays, or uh, or uh, I will ask a council member for a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn only requires a motion, does not require a second, because I don't think anyone of us is prepared to sit here all night and listen to that. You, sir, have the podium. All of the speakers are deserving of our respect, irrespective of what their position might be. We will not be answering questions as they are fired off. I am keeping a list of questions, then I will answer those questions based on my determination who is best to answer those. Sir, welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Ballsom. This is my wife behind me, her name's Amanda. We're actually relatively new residents to Geneva.
Mr. Ballsom, the spelling of your last name, sir?
B, Z, N, Boy, A, L, S, A, N is a Nancy.
Great, thank you.
We are relatively new residents to Geneva. We just moved here in October of last year. And I think that the word the gentleman used to describe this project is very appropriate. I think it is absolutely catalytic. A little history about myself and my wife, we grew up in Naperville, so we lived there over 30 years. And it's why we're not living in Naperville any longer, is because of the development and the way that the downtown area and the entire city developed. I think that a project like this, of this size and this scale, would be perfectly appropriate in a city like Naperville, because that's exactly what happened. Please go downtown Naperville and try to locate the riverfront, and you'll be quite challenged to do so. The views are gone, the hometown feel is gone from Naperville, and that's why we chose Geneva. We described Geneva as Naperville 30 years ago while we were growing up. We moved to Geneva to raise a family, and we want to have that same experience of early Naperville for our children here in Geneva in a well-established community of people that have absolutely embraced us here. My question would be is, with 1.25 parking spots per apartment, townhouse, whatever you may describe it, are these individuals going to have single occupancy, never have any visitors? And we have expectations that this is not going to have an impact on traffic and parking in our absolutely gorgeous downtown area, which is actually what drew us to the city in the first place. That amount of people and that small of a space, it will be catalytic because other developers, other developers will want to do the very same thing, destroy the beauty that we currently have in our downtown area, build it up, pack people in, and profit. That's not what Geneva is. That's not why we moved here, and that we would absolutely hate to see Geneva go down the very same path as Naperville. It's not always about how many people can you pack in. We have absolutely amazing residents, and we don't need to stack them as high as possible. I mean, if you look at downtown Naperville, they have the largest downtown parking areas you can see, and they're considering building more and more and more because there is not enough space for all the vehicles. Most household households are two-income households, you have two or more vehicles. They have to go somewhere. To say that there's no parking required for the commercial area is ludicrous. We have friends that have difficulty getting around. They need to park near where they want to shop or spend their time. Where are they going to park? How are they going to enjoy this commercial area, these pop-up areas which are supposed to be a draw? How are those people supposed to enjoy that? They're not going to have the ability to do so. I truly hope you take these things into consideration and realize that this, this is not Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you for your time in listening to our questions. I have only a couple of things to add to what my husband already said. If you look at the history of Geneva, it's very stable. It's, it hasn't had the massive growth like some other suburbs have. And I appreciate that the planners are trying to bring more income and attract more residents to the city, but quite frankly, I don't think we need it. It's a very successful bustling downtown already. We already have tons of visitors, our festivals every day. We, we don't need a transformation like this project is suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Eileen Stocking, S T O C K I N G. I'm a Navy vet. I'm also a landscape architect, retired. I have lived here, I own two homes in Geneva. I lived in the east, then I moved to the other side of Geneva. My, my proposal and my wedding events were right here at Harrington, so my kids went to Geneva schools in high school, now they're off to college. So I am also founder and very integrated and part of Geneva. It's, Geneva is my family. This is a very important entry into Geneva. It is a gateway. The proposal that we see is very enormous. 116 units, I've done the math, it's 270 cars at least, with only 115 parking spaces. So, and I appreciate the work that the landscape architects, architects have done, the planners. I understand how hard it is to, to come up with a plan and, and all of this work, but, but some of the words they've used, this is Geneva, this is in scale, we will, you know, like, respect Geneva. It's not doing it. It's very enormous. It's a very enormous building. It doesn't fit in that area. I would like to see what the survey results were. There were about 70 surveys, so I don't know what those survey results were. The river, that riverfront area, it already has a bridge and a pathway to Island Park. That's Island Park. So there's already access to Island Park, and you can very easily step and go around it, I'm going to call it, the pond. I think it's already open to the public. I mean, it is, it's already open to the public, as long as you don't put signs that say stay out and, you know, private property, it's already open to the public. People can easily access it. I agree with all of the comments prior to mine, that we're asking you, what I ask you is, don't put an apartment like they're building over at Jewel on 38. It's an extremely very large square rectangular building, two of them. I'm asking, don't build an apartment and buildings like downtown Wheaton, downtown Lombard, Naperville, it's very congested in Naperville, and St. Charles is falling victim to this as well, with their two big buildings. So don't, please don't do that to Geneva. So do hear us over and over to keep it as Geneva, please. I would ask that the three other corners be left alone. They are, they, they are just fine, just as they are. If you need to know examples of what to do, it's very, I would think it's very easy. Just make an exact replica of Harrington on the opposite side. Harrington is beautiful, it's about three stories, or whatever you build, please keep it at three stories, even though I understand it's, it's already like two stories below grade, but it does not, it cannot, cannot be as high as the senior center residence, Kitty Corner to it. You could build something like the buildings on Third Street by the train station, that's the Shodin project, and so is the Harrington. Shodin has done just beautiful works. That's what attracts people to Geneva. people to Geneva, is the Shodine name and his buildings. So this is very unlike Shodine, but those two buildings are very nice, also the brick condos near Seventh and South. Also, even if we went with the least amount of buildings proposed, which is about twenty-two condos on that site, it should be reduced to even eleven. Twenty-two, it's only an acre and a half, plus or minus. It's only an acre and a half of land. A lot of people either have one house on an acre, or maybe, let's say, two houses on that size of property. So again, going back to put practically two hundred and seventy people, because most people that live in townhouses or apartments are at least two, it's a couple. So to put over two hundred and seventy people on an acre and a half is pretty dense. Now, I understand, this result to me looks like the result for the stakeholders, okay, in the TIF district. This seems like an answer to them, but not to the majority of the residents and the beauty of Geneva. And again, I know we're probably worried about the stakeholders and the TIF district, but, you know, if you do watch, I would just say walk downtown, walk downtown Third Street, and that is Geneva. We all know it, we've all lived here a long time. And if you watch the Hallmark Channel, we all, maybe most of us have, everybody loves it, it's beautiful, that is almost Geneva, okay? And you don't need a massive building, you will get visitors, you will get your TIF money, you will get businesses and lots of business money coming in, if you keep us quaint and keep us as Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stocking. Hi.
Hi, my name is Denise Ward, W-A-R-D. I'm also a resident of the east side. And I can resonate with a couple of the comments of the former speaker. I definitely am concerned about the size, but I do support doing something on the east side in that particular location. We've been waiting for years for something to happen, and right now it looks like our best prospects might be a Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. Anyone who invests money expects to make a reasonable return on investment. So I do support the concept of townhomes and apartments, but I'm concerned about the views to the river. I don't quite understand, I'd like some clarification, on how the view to the downtown is still preserved. And just because there's a tall building on the northeast side of the street, doesn't mean you have to have an equally tall building on the southwest side of the street. That's why I agree that marrying the Harrington or something like that is much more in line with Geneva. One of the things the east side has, that the west side doesn't, is superior access to the river. So taking advantage of the riverfront, and I understand that public access can't be, they can't do anything about, it's going to be public access no matter what, because we have the Fox River Trail that goes through there. So I know that people are concerned that that's going to be cut off in some way, and I don't think that's going to happen. Anyway, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Jim McNish, 132 South Bennet Street. Lived there for about forty-odd years. I'm sorry, I'm not really prepared. My wife had to go to the hospital today, so I've been otherwise occupied. I'm a businessman, I run McNish Corporation, we have two divisions in King County, one is Aurora Walker Process Equipment, and the other is the old American Woolworks Company. I have great difficulty dealing with the proposition, stuffing a whole bunch of people at the end of a great island that brings fame to this county and town is ridiculous in my mind. I wish I had more time to prepare my argument, but I don't understand it. It doesn't make sense to me that the numbers are irrelevant to the largeness of the community. What you want is a community that represents something, and to have an island with a whole bunch of folks stuffed on the end of it, with cars running in and out, that makes no long-term sense, I don't think makes the grade. I'll prepare a better argument down the road. But this is going in my mind the wrong direction, and I would like you to consider that. Thank you.
Give our best to Mrs. McNish.
I shall, if she's still speaking to me.
We can edit that out of the tape if you'd like us to.
You have a deal.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Winnie Frankel, F-R-A-N-K-E-L, and I am not here to give an opinion, I really just have a question for clarification. In the presentation and in some of our neighborhood conversations, there was just discussion about what that lot is currently allowed to have, based on existing, existing whatever the word is, statutes, I don't know. And I'm looking for more insight from someone, whether it's Citi, or Hitchcock Group, or Shodine, as to the likelihood that Shodine will develop the commercial use property and that first, sort of, on the presentation, that first drawing, and likelihood. And that's it.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Zinke, and I live on Geneva's east side, oh, sorry, Z as in zebra, I-N-K-E. I live just four blocks from this development. I am a long-term member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I am the wife of Fred H. Zinke, who was the applicant of the historic landmark nomination for the Mill Race Inn Stone Building, which the city council granted. City council granted this landmark status on May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and I thank you for this opportunity. I am concerned about the future of the historic Mill Race Stone Building, which doesn't seem to be planned for in this development scheme that we are discussing tonight. My purpose is to remind you of the value of this building. It's more than a hundred and seventy years old, eighteen forty-three. It is one of the oldest sites on Geneva's east side. It was built only ten years after Geneva was established in eighteen thirty-five, and it is one of only two very early light industrial Geneva buildings that still exists. It is located on the ford of the Fox, where travelers coming from the east crossed, and many of the workers that were employed in this building built their houses for their families on State Street, School, Sand Home, Nebraska, and other nearby streets. This building has been a blacksmith's forge, a paper manufacturing building, a wheel and wagon construction building, auto repair, a plumber's shop, and others over the years. Its limestone blocks were quarried from the riverbank on site, and it maintains at least eighty percent of its original appearance and structure, and that figure comes from our Historic Preservation Planner, who I have great respect for. In nineteen thirty-three, during the Great Depression, the building was remodeled by August Wilson, of Wilson Brothers fame, and some of those original windows that he installed still remain. Anne Forsyth used this building to open her Mill Race Inn Tea Room. She had the encouragement and guidance of Kate Rafferty, who was the owner at that time of the Little Traveler. The restaurant then morphed into the Mill Race Inn Restaurant that all of us remember, or, sorry, many of us remember. Sadly, it was torn down in two thousand and sixteen. However, the demolishing process was carefully orchestrated to preserve this building with a published statement that it was worthy of preservation. I am one of a group of people who began planning at that time on how to care for and repurpose this historic gem. Those plans were put on hold, giving the Shodine people time to come up with their overall development plan for this almost one and a half acre site. Now it appears that this plan is emerging, and I feel that it is now time for the Mill Race Stone Building repurposing plan to begin. And I urge you as city council to require that this historic Geneva local landmark be incorporated in the overall development plan, keeping the original historic structure intact and recognizable. Landmarks Illinois, Preservation Partners, and a local group of concerned citizens are willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zinke. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Maureen Dixon, I'm a resident since nineteen eighty-six, resident of the east side. I walk by and I drive by this particular site every day. What I like to see is something I'd be proud of. I've been very proud of, and I like to start out by saying I don't have anything prepared, I like to go with a positive, a critique, and then another positive. The positive is simply what I have seen Mr. Shodine do, and in the way of the architect, what they probably could incorporate on that piece of property that would be viable for all of us, including those who would live there. I don't know about you, but walking by the river, I don't see a ton of ducks or geese that all conglomerate in a little pond, they like to spread out. You need room to breathe. And so I like to ask that maybe perhaps that could be taken into consideration. The critique is simply what everybody else has said. I've been able to work via the Facebook stuff and kind of voice my opinion, but I wanted to say to you in person, please take consideration for this teeny-weeny one point eight acres of development that could be done very nicely. Again, Harrington, the river, the three buildings on River Street, that was a little bit of a fight, but it was done, and it's done tastefully. I'm very proud of it, I think it's beautiful. And then finally, the area over there on Third Street by the train station, it was done very nicely. I want to be proud of my city, I guess we're going to live here forever, according to my husband, and I want to be able to walk by it and not drive by like what's going up in St. Charles, and say, who decided to do that? It's not pretty, it's not attractive, but it's doable. So I'm asking for your consideration in just reducing. I know it can be done, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Good evening, sir.
Dan Horne, H-O-R-N-E. I've lived here in Geneva for thirteen and a half years, sorry, but I still speak southern. Too old to lose it. But anyway, you know, I was quite encouraged, well, it's been three or four years ago when Shodine bought the property, I was really encouraged, because I agree with what several of the speakers have said. I believe they developed the property where the old Delnor Hospital was, Dodson Place, I believe they developed that, and they did a great job. And then when they built the apartments across the street there on Third, it's been mentioned, south, just south of South, they developed that, and they did a great job. They put businesses, there's two actually restaurants in the bottom floor of those businesses, they're very successful, and I thought, so when Shodine bought the property, I was very encouraged, because I've seen the other evidence of what they do here in Geneva, and I thought, okay, that's what they'll do. They'll put a building like that, maybe with condos or residents and not apartments like at the spot on Third Street. And then I know last year, I believe, Batavia approved a large apartment complex by the Shodine Properties on Twenty-Five. And so that started getting me a little bit concerned, okay, have they changed the direction they're going into, trying to build the largest buildings they could? And then when this came out, and I agree with what the gentleman, first gentleman spoke, I believe they went into the meeting a couple weeks ago knowing what the outcome, where they wanted to be. I thought it was interesting tonight when he mentioned the restaurant, because if you go back to the survey, the original survey, thirty-two percent, the number one thing that the residents wanted, thirty-two percent wanted a restaurant there. It was quite interesting tonight that right off the bat, he just discounted a restaurant, say, you know, can't do it, it's going to sit there five years. Well, just don't be fair, don't throw fear into people that's going to sit there for five years. Shodine's owned the property now for three or four years, why haven't they already been looking for somebody to lease a restaurant? And maybe we don't need a ten thousand square foot restaurant, maybe we do need something smaller, like in the apartment complex there on Third Street. But there needs to be some type of restaurants, because that is what the residents do want, is some type of restaurants, a restaurant in that area. And I do believe that the size of that, and we should not be comparing, I agree with the other lady, we should not be comparing the size of the retirement home, or whatever it's called, the Geneva place, I believe it's called, across the street. We should not be comparing what we put on the river to that building. And I, for one, have heard many, many people believe that building should never have been approved. That is way out of scale with Geneva. But with the proposal I've heard tonight, it's completely out of scale what we have here in Geneva. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patty Poyer, P-O-I-R-I-E-R. I'm very nervous, I have great concerns about this structure, and I really was so happy that someone made a suggestion about keeping it in design and shape and everything like the Harrington. Chicago Magazine did an article in December twenty seventeen on the city of Geneva, stating that this was a staycation place where people come to relax. The author said, take three days, go and relax, whether it's summer, whether it's winter, go. And he mentioned in the photographs, one of the photographs was a picture of the King County seat, which was there, has been here since eighteen thirty-five. That view is visible now when you come down the road, Twenty-Five, into Geneva. I live on Twenty-Five, and I can see it from my deck. It's a very beautiful landmark, and we have it for the whole of King County. To obscure that with an oversized structure isn't in keeping with what people have stated is the character and culture of Geneva. I really need to stop, I'm too nervous.
Oh, you're doing great, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Christine Kautz, I live on South Batavia Avenue in Geneva. Thank you to the council for allowing this to be a public forum tonight, and I'd like, I also wanted to thank the Shodine Family Foundation for also letting us all participate in this discussion. My concern is not necessarily with what the Family Foundation wants to do with their property, because they're the owners, I don't think that's on me, but I am concerned about the public use, and when the Hitchcock Group talks about high amenity, highly attractive things that come to the riverfront, that draw people to the riverfront. I love the couple from Naperville, the Balsams, how they spoke about the attractiveness and the natural beauty that the river provides. Those people who've been flooded by that natural beauty would might argue that. However, it is a very beautiful, as we can see, a beautiful place to live. My concern is when I attended the last night of the charade, there was discussion about the north side of the bridge, which is currently on the side where the Mill Race Cyclery is. And there was some talk about creating kayak runs, maybe some walkways that have tree houses, it kind of sounded like, for lack of a better word, it sounded kind of like a forest, maybe like a Disney kind of thing. And I guess my concern is when you, the council, have to talk about how both sides of that access to the river develops, I would hope that we would try to tread lightly. It is a natural resource, I'm sure the DNR will probably be involved in some of this at some point, but that we should tread lightly on this beautiful piece of environment that we have called home here for a long time. We worked hard to get this river to be clean enough to kayak in and maybe even eat a fish out of. I feel like maybe attracting a lot of people who want to Disneyfy it might make it less viable. So my concern is for the environment and for the river, as well as keeping it the natural beauty that it is.
Thank you.
I am Bruce Heidlauf, H-E-I-D-L-A-U-F. I actually live on the river in the Shodine Development right down the street there, and I'm a longtime resident- there, and I, I'm a longtime resident of Geneva. I own Millray Cyclory. Been there for thirty-six years, thirty-seven years ago, I started actually with Millray Sin for, hence the name, and hence my logo, and ended up buying it out about thirty-six years ago. And obviously, you know, the day that Millray Sin closed, there was a definite sucking sound on that side of town, and I'm excited to have something come in and something to happen, hopefully quickly. So I'm all for this, this whole movement. I am concerned about the scale of what is going on. You know, you use Geneva Place as a example of this is what is here now, and we're only going to be a little bit bigger. Geneva Place, I think, is way out of scale of whatever should have been built there in the first place. You drive down the 25, and it does not belong there, and then to come up with something even on a larger scale, I think it's, I think it's out of place. I think something done nicely over there, I might even be, I would probably be interested in perhaps living there. But I think the scale of this project is, is out of place. I'm very excited about some of the plans they have for the river. I think that is a, that the river we have is a real, they don't make any more riverfront property, I think it's a real jump to Geneva, and I get excited when I see that artist's rendering. I get not excited when I see how big this project is. I also wonder where all the cars are going to be. Back when the Millray Sin was there, there was a parking problem. There is no parking problem now, there's parking everywhere you can go to, but where are people going to park? It concerns me, and I just, I hope they come up with something that is going to truly benefit Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Rodriguez, R-O-D-R-I-G-U-Z. I live at 227 Wall Street. I'm kind of new to Geneva, I'm only here for five years, but I'd lived in Glen Ellen, my office is in Glen Ellen, has been for, since the mid-eighties. But my business has taken me to Geneva often, and generally, my route here has always been along State Street. And I hate to sound romantic about it, big fat bald guys don't normally sound romantic, but as I, I make the turn at the top of the hill and, you know, come down that incline towards the river, it's amazing, even when I didn't live here, I still felt, this is really coming to a home. I mean, the view that you have as you come down State Street towards the river is irreplaceable. Some of the discussion about comparison to Geneva Place, it's only a block and a half from where I live, it's one of those things like everything else, the more you look at something, the righter it looks, is an interesting expression, but it's true. But when you see the drawings that you saw tonight, it's, as you, if you can imagine now coming down State Street to the river, you're coming down almost a canyon of building. The town that you see from the top of the incline as you approach is now gone. Your vision of the river, you know, from Geneva Place, you can pick it up because of the fact it's on the east side of the river, you can pick up visually some of the river. But the size of this building on the west side, you'd have to basically to the bridge before you'd be seeing the river. Now, okay, fine, maybe somebody can say, I can wait till I get to the bridge to see it, but the whole optical beauty of this, the city is the river and your approach to it. And I don't have statistics, I don't have, you know, any numbers or anything like that, I'm just telling you from one man's opinion, is this is a beautiful town, this is a beautiful city, and any visitor that comes here, their first impression of this city is what my first impression was. From the apex and down to the river is spectacular. And to come through a canyon and to say, well, Geneva Place is our standard, that's a mistake. And hopefully, no one takes that as being, you know, how they make the judgment relative to this. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Lichtenheld. I live on James Street, I'm sorry, spelling is L-I-C-H-T-E-N-H-E-L-D. I've lived on James Street for nineteen years. I'm going to keep my comments concise, I think I have this down to a minute. I participated in all three meetings of the charrette. The residents who attended, as far as I know, were not urban planners, architects, or engineers. As such, we had only one tool, our words. We listened, gave input, then counted on the experts to consider and reflect our words in the recommended plan. Here are the kinds of words I heard from residents that first nights. Iconic, something that could become a symbol of Geneva, something we could be proud of. Welcoming and friendly, reflective of Geneva's aesthetic, culturally significant, an attractive gateway to a unique town. I don't think the average person would use these words to describe the recommended plan. Taste is subjective, but I see a large apartment building that turns its back on anyone approaching from or living on the east side. It's jammed into a small footprint with minimal public access. I think the charrette was a great idea, a great concept, but the outcome does not, does very little to reflect the input from a constituency it was designed to give voice to, the community of Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Colin Campbell. I live at 18 South Sixth Street in Geneva. When the referendum on the bond issue to fund the construction of a new library was passed, the Geneva Library Board scheduled a series of public meetings that asked the community for input on the design of the new building. The original meetings were much like the first meetings of the recent charrette that was held by the city, Shodine, and the design group. In the library meetings, we discussed the general concerns and wishes of the community, and the library leadership and the architects developed several general design ideas which were discussed in subsequent meetings. Finally, the architects developed three design proposals which were presented, discussed, and then voted on by the people. There was a clear winner, the design called the Bridge, and that building is now under construction. In the recent charrette to seek community input on the Millray's project, we went through much the same process. Community ideas and wishes were sought, and four proposals were presented by the design group. But then, the process changed. While they sought discussion on the four proposed designs from the community, they did not hold any sort of referendum or vote to determine the people's preferences between the designs that were submitted. They simply closed the meeting, and then two days later, came back with their own choice. They gave an extensive sales pitch on that choice, leading off with a grand plan for a riverfront development that, only after a question was asked much later in the meeting, they admitted that that part of the proposal and that part of the development would be entirely up to the city. At that point, I could not help but feel that the development project was, that was chosen, was in fact a design that had actually been decided upon by the design group and the developer in advance of the charrette, and that the charrette itself was merely an exercise designed to sell the community on the project that the developer wanted all along. The proposed development is obviously the biggest, and this is important, potentially the most profitable, that can possibly be placed on the available land. The idea that maximum profit rather than any benefit to the city has been the idea all along, I think. And I thought that was confirmed by the rapid and firm rejection of a suggestion to include a few affordable units in the apartment complex, and this just a week after the city council meeting on that very real need for more affordable housing in Geneva. So if anyone takes exception to my opinion about this matter, I would like to make a simple request. Before the charrette began, the city and the design group sought the opinion of Geneva's through an online survey that received a strong response. I would request that the city and/or the design group hold another online survey, post accurate and correct renderings and descriptions of the three housing projects that were proposed, and give the people two weeks to vote on their preference for this development. That would, at least, complete the stated purpose of the charrette, to determine the public's preference on what should be built on the old Millray's property. Doing this won't cost anything, and in the end, while such a survey might not change what will finally be built on the property, it might give you, the council, more information regarding your constituents' wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Erica Asturlid. I'll re spell the last name because I know it's difficult. It's E-Y-S-T-U-R-L-I-D, like Delta. As my husband previously spoke, we've lived here now for eighteen years. There are some things that came to my mind that, and first of all, I would agree with everyone else's statements about the size and scale of this project. I believe it is not in relation to the community, to the neighborhood, to the folks who live on the east side, to what you see when you drive into Geneva. It literally, as we're seeing this presentation of this, you know, scale of building that is comparable to Geneva Place, I felt sick at the idea of I'd be driving into Geneva. I wouldn't see the river, I would see building, and then, oh, when I get to the bridge, I can see the river. I'm not sure how that relates to river access, or the view of Geneva, or the things that we pride ourselves on, but hopefully that can be further discussed. One thing that has been on my mind for a while, my understanding of the development of looking at east side, because we know the east side does not have the business that the west side does, and my understanding from plans previously was that those plans included seeking retail and business to help anchor the tax base there. My limited understanding of how things are funded is that our businesses provide more tax base than our residents do, and that goes to how schools are funded and libraries and all those wonderful things. So that is my question about that, is where are we getting tax revenue from? What's more important? Because I do believe previous development was more about the idea of developing retail. There were some plans to develop some things out by Kirk, and those unfortunately fell through and the market went. So there's my question about that. I spoke to the idea of the gateway. I do not see how a building of that scale and scope is a gateway, it's more of a hindrance. And then I have some anecdotal things that, for someone who lives in Geneva, but I work in Naperville, I work in Naperville Public Schools, and I frequently talk to my parents and my students about what they enjoy about the community. Longtime residents of Naperville, like the couple who moved here, very much don't enjoy their downtown anymore. They very much miss the hometown feel. There are no local businesses, hardly left at all in downtown Naperville, it's all become chain. Many of them come here to shop, and the comments I get to hear is, oh, you live in Geneva, what a wonderful community, I wish our community was still like that. So I'm concerned that in an effort to grow, we're going to grow ourselves into something that we don't necessarily want to be, and we'll lose our iconic, as the gentleman referenced, our iconic identity. I'm not sure that's an understanding of it that we all agree on. The other question I have is about, we already have two housing projects in development, I believe. There's one that's in progress over by the 711 that's started, or at least it's signage up for it, I don't know when that's going to go, and then the homes that are being built on that limited site there, where the greenhouse used to be on Western Avenue, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of that housing project. What's the impact going to be on those, if we're developing those two housing projects already, how can we have another one in this community? At what point are we going to grow to? When I interviewed for a job eighteen years ago at Geneva High School, one of the things that the principal impressed upon me was the idea that Geneva had a cap in mind, that it did not want to become St. Charles, that it did not want to become Batavia, it wanted to remain a small community, and that there was a population size growth in mind that the community had supposedly had a discussion about, folks who were on the council at that time, eighteen years ago, a discussion about, that that was something that as a, someone who was willing, looking to hire me as an employee, was very much about the idea of we want to keep our community small and keep it a community that we all can enjoy, as opposed to whatever the most bang for the buck we can get. And the scope and scale of this project that was presented tonight, I believe it's the bang for the buck, as opposed to access to and enjoying riverfront property, and there's also definite concerns I have about environmental impact and flooding, but I think that will probably just have to come with whoever gets developed there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before I turn it over to the council, actually, before I recite the questions that were asked, if the council permits me to do so, or do you like to hear from the council now? Mrs., well, Mrs. Stocking, we normally don't recognize people twice for the same topic, unless there's something absolutely new and urgent you'd like to share?
Yes, in very short. Thank you. Eileen Stocking, just one final important aspect of all this, the sponsors, the stakeholders, yourselves, you have invested a certain amount of money into the charrette. Please don't just pick this plan just because you've invested money in the charrette. If the charrette fails, and not fails, but gets voted down, or we move forward to design something better, please consider that this investment is, has been well, 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 well-spent in letting us know that the plan proposed is just not the best plan for Geneva. It's money well-spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the council permit me to rattle off the questions as I understand them? And I will invite Mr. Hitchcock and/or Mr. DeGroot to respond to those questions. And by any, by all means, anyone correct me if I lost or left out anything. And of course, the first gentleman, whose name I'm going to completely massacre, I'm going to say Mr. E., how's that?
Works.
Does that work? Okay. Forgive me. A lot of statements made, few questions asked. One of the questions was, which I, forgive me if my comments come across as perhaps direct, but I find this one most interesting. Will the folks in the apartment pay taxes? Of course they will. They pay taxes through their lease agreements, as you well know. If I live in an apartment and I pay my monthly rent, part of that monthly rent is taxes. Where will the school kids, if any, hop on and/or off a bus? That's to be determined in cooperation with the school district. You use the phrase, why are we focusing on part-time visitors? Are you referencing the dwellers, or are you referencing the attraction to the riverfront?
Can I speak?
Please do, come on up. I'm going to be, I'm not going to let you go on and on, but I just want to clarify before I respond.
No, I actually have a PhD in history. I can talk for three or four hours, so I understand.
God help us, I got a GED from Geneva High School, so we're...
I heard. I heard about that.
Yeah, I know. Still up for grabs.
So the idea is, well, he'd mentioned visitors coming. If people live here, I assume they'll live in the apartments, full-time?
Of course.
Why are they visitors? What's bringing visitors into downtown Geneva for a place on the east side?
Got it, okay. I will defer to those, that answer to perhaps one of our professionals, but I certainly have an opinion regarding that. Let's see, let's see, let's see, let's see. Okay, Mr. Balsin? The one question I identified in your statements was, there seems to be no parking for the commercial component, and that seems to be insufficient for you?
Park, it wasn't just for the commercial side of things, but I referenced also people that live there, having visitors, things like that.
Okay.
All those individuals.
Just, just to clarify, again, I mean this respectfully, if anyone opens a retail business in what we consider the downtown, and the downtown is defined by East Side Drive all the way to Anderson Boulevard, unless it is a planned unit development and a standalone project that requires certain parking, our friends who are opening on State Street, our new place on Third Street, on Hamilton Street, parking's not required for anyone. With respect to the apartment building proposed, the coefficient that's being used, while a single-family home may have a two-car garage, the city of Geneva cannot regulate how many vehicles that home has. I have heard, and I know council members have heard, oh my gosh, my neighbor has seven cars, and they happen to have four kids, this place is a fiasco. I think that's the reality of folks moving in and out of communities, et cetera. So with respect to the crunch, a crunch exists everywhere, perhaps, depending on the life... the lifestyle the residents choose, whether they be one car, two car, what have you. So. Let's see, Mrs. Balsin? Mrs. Stocking, the one question I secured from you was, why weren't the survey results, some 70-odd survey results?
Where are they?
Where are they? I'm going to have Mr. Hitchcock address that.
Thanks.
I'll have Mr. Hitchcock address that. We did discover, for what it's worth, that the way we set up that survey, we goofed. We were receiving commentary from folks who don't live in the community, and therefore we determined, and I will again let Mr. Hitchcock respond to this, that because of that glitch, we felt that the majority of those survey results were invalidated because of it. Not unlike some of the comments we've all seen on the Facebook posts. Mrs. Ward, the view of downtown is still... Forgive me. The question is, will the view of downtown still be preserved? Is that your comment, Mrs. Ward?
Yeah, Mr. Hitchcock said something about the view being preserved, and my concern was, I'd like to know, how is that going to happen with buildings so tall?
Got it. Okay. Okay. Let's see. Oh, Mr. McNish, is Mr. McNish still with us?
No, he had to go.
For what it's worth, folks, and forgive me for editorializing here, but if you do not know Mr. and Mrs. McNish, they are extraordinary people in this community. Mr. McNish was central in creating a lot of organizations that serve a lot of people. He's a good guy. And I hope his wife is doing well. Mrs. Frankel, the question was, what is by-right zoning? I believe that was your question.
Do the actual McNish have a question?
Where's Winnie? I can't, oh, is that your question?
Yeah.
There was a technical term used, by-right zoning. What exactly does that mean? We will have Mr. DeGroot respond to you in very simple terms and technical terms as to what that means. Mrs. Dixon, no questions asked, statements made. Mr. Horn, the one question I had that I recorded was, the restaurant use was central to 32% of the people. We're going to share with you why a restaurant will not work at that site. Mrs. Poiret, is it?
Poiret.
Poiret, forgive me. Lots of statements, no questions specifically. Mrs. Kautz, the one question you asked was the, oh, good Lord. With respect to the north side of the bridge, those options are not being considered this evening, and were specifically eliminated from the presentation because, I will acknowledge, that was a mistake. We should not have focused on that area. Mr. Heideloff, statements, no questions that I have. Mr. Rodriguez, same. Mr. Lichtenfeld, same. Mr. Campbell, you asked a question. Can we do a survey again? I certainly have my opinion. I will ask the design group chairman, Mr. Hitchcock, to respond. And then I believe Mrs. E., if I may respectfully, question. Where are we getting tax dollars with respect to east gateway developments over the years? Is that a fair summary of your question? And the other question was, we already have multiple housing projects being developed. Why do we need more? Is that a fair statement? Okay. I can answer your second one, I think fairly succinctly. As you well know, one of the city's objectives is to create a alternative housing stock. The two housing developments you spoke of, the one on West State Street, as all of the council members know, includes 20 market-rate apartments. It also includes townhomes and single-family homes. The average price of the townhomes is expected to be somewhere in the $600,000 range, the single-family homes in the $800,000 range. The 20 homes scheduled for development along Western Avenue, which is the Green Point, Greenhouse Point, is approximately, is, at the very least, is going to be a half a million dollars and up. I believe that we agreed that this project addresses, at the very least, an alternative housing option as opposed to single-family. Did I miss anyone's questions? Mr. DeGroot, let's get rid of the technical, or not rid of, excuse me, let's address the technical matters, if I may. With respect to by-right zoning that Mrs. Frankel asked, can you explain very simply what that is? Mr. Hitchcock touched on it, but from a professional planner's perspective and a zoning perspective, could you...
Sure. So the property is owned B2 Business District right now, which is the zoning you see all along the West State Street. Zero setback required, 100% lock coverage, up to four stories tall. It requires a commercial presence on the first floor, so that could be office, service uses, retail, and then it allows any of those uses on the floors above or residential uses on the floors above. It does require that you're able to park the residential uses, but you don't have to provide parking for the commercial uses. Is that succinct enough?
Council, Alderman Ruby?
In addition to that, she had also asked the likelihood of that happening, and I know that's speculation.
I've touched on that, yeah. I was going to address that later, too, with respect to the speculation. I think it'd be unfair to ask Mr. DeGroot to speculate whether or not...
Okay. Well, I didn't know...
Because, of course, we're party to that as well.
Sure. I didn't know if there was possible to get an answer on the speculation. I know it's hard to answer, but that was a big part of her question that I would like an answer to as well.
I cannot speak for the Shodine Family Foundation, but it's my gut that they would not answer that question directly, nor, quite frankly, why should they? I think they're interested, much like we are, in advancing this opportunity so that a lot of these issues can be addressed with respect to the Plan Commission, which has that review and that right. If, in fact, this entire process is voted down tonight, then the Shodine Family Foundation certainly has the right and the option to consider that. Whether they would or not, I don't know. And I don't want to put words in the mouth of the private property owner. Winnie, is that a comfortable answer for you?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
Bridgette, from the Hitchcock Design Group, if I may ask you, or perhaps Mr. Hitchcock, there was a question asked with respect to restaurant use. We showed in our presentation why a restaurant would not be successful in that site, and there's also another element to share, if you're interested, or I'm interested later, so.
Yeah. The point about the restaurant, and I really want to stress this, is it's, not that you can't have a restaurant, it's that we require a very significant subsidy by the city, and it wouldn't provide any of the TIF. Plus, it's always tenant-driven, and we can talk about tenants that may be interested here. It's my understanding that there are some long-term vacancies even at Geneva Commons, of very large restaurants, and it has to do with really what's going on in the marketplace today. So the point was made that a restaurant doesn't provide the same catalyst that other types of development do on this site, and that the only ones, if you just step back a minute and look at the whole Chicago market, you can look at some places, Wheeling is subsidizing completely the cost of the building of a restaurant there. It's being built, and it's not, it's got a tenant, but that's the kind of subsidy it takes to get a restaurant today.
What is the estimated cost to build that restaurant with the subsidies?
Well, we came up with, I believe the whole was something like $3 million just on the construction of that restaurant, and then there might be operating issues because of the cost today, and if you look around, what you'll see is that most new restaurants there are going into existing space because we could talk a lot about commercial construction, but it's always less expensive to reoccupy something that's gone vacant. So, but it did, it looked like about $3 million right up front, and then there's no guarantee that you wouldn't have to provide additional subsidies later.
I did have a question from Mr. E. that I failed to recognize, and the one question was, Mr. Hitch... I beg your pardon?
You have like four questions.
Well, why don't you come up to the podium and correct me? That'd be awesome. Because the one question we had was, what happens to Oak Street?
Yeah, what happens to Oak Street? I also had, if you could answer, what does diverse usage mean and diverse visitors mean?
Well, let me ask you, sir. What's it mean to you?
Diverse?
Yeah.
Actually, this is not a concern for mine, but I know it's a potentially political concern at the moment. If you plan on bringing...
If I may ask, why is it a political concern?
Well, because with notions of equity and things, I know the idea would be to have more African-Americans and Hispanics in our community, which we have outside of the couple of housing areas and access to school. I really don't see anybody living in my area or over on the immediate west side who fits that bill, or am I wrong?
May I challenge you as to...
Sure.
Why would anyone, based on their color, or, excuse me, their skin color, be of a political concern to anyone here?
I don't know. You brought up the notion of diversity, and you asked me what I thought it meant. So I answered your question.
Thank you.
Didn't I?
So now we know where you stand with respect to diversity.
So what do you consider it to be?
What's your other questions?
I had asked, when you talk about stakeholders...
Yes, sir.
Does that not include citizens?
Absolutely.
Okay. When his description of stakeholders did not...
Well, it should be, it should be inferred that the city council, as representative of the citizens, is the stakeholder.
I don't like to infer things.
Understood.
And then I was also, I asked what tremendous riverfrontage means, because you kept using the term tremendous riverfrontage, which is incredibly vague. And then I'll leave off one last thing.
Right, wait.
The restaurant underneath what used to be Homestad, now it's called Geneva Place...
Correct.
Had a huge apartment above it, and it was a miserable failure.
Yes, sir.
Why would now, having pre-built restaurant space with a big apartment above it, succeed?
You're probably not aware that the original developers of the now Geneva Place went under. You're probably not aware that despite that 6,000-plus square foot space that used to be called Rain, the restaurant, unfortunately, the owner of that respectfully failed, as he did in his other restaurants. With respect to diversity, you've defined it the way you see fit, so I'll leave it at that. What happens to Oak Street with respect to the plan? Mr. Hitchcock and/or Mr. DeGroot, would you like to respond to that? And don't use vagaries.
I shall not. Thank you, Mayor. Since we don't want to be vague, let's find the plan. There we go. With respect to Oak Street, which is right here, there's a little chunk of right-of-way, and it's, gosh, it's just barely visible right there. So there's a piece of dedicated right-of-way right there for Oak Street Extended. But anyway, there is, contemplated in this scheme, there is a private driveway that would come in at that location. Seems very logical. Certainly, our traffic engineer suggests that's the case. But if you're going to get a curb cut anyplace on Bennett, this is the place to get it, a full, a full turning movement cut right here. So motorists can access and make, well, from either direction, whether they're going northbound or southbound, they can access this entrance. And conversely, when they're leaving this entrance, they can also turn left or turn right, and there's decent sight visibility. That's the Oak Street from the motorist's perspective. From the pedestrian perspective, we would like to see a sidewalk extended all the way from Bennett all the way to the public riverfront. Now, to be sure, we also would love to see some kind of connections across Bennett. We have speculated internally on the team about whether we would be successful getting, just as a for instance, like a pedestrian actuated signal there. That's anybody's guess, and we would be speculating greatly, but we would love to see, for the benefit of all the neighborhood, we'd love to see a safer pedestrian crossing across Bennett at Oak Street in this vicinity. I hope that, does that answer your question?
It does for me. Mr. Isaac, are you comfortable with that response?
Actually, may I just...
Come on up to the podium.
Just so I'm clear on this.
Come on up all the way to the podium before you start speaking, because we can't, unfortunately, capture you for the audio.
Just to make sure I understand this, because I can see this from my house, referencing the right-of-ways currently where it's already utility access, where the existing driveway is correct for the parking lot? That's what he's referring to? Because that's where the existing, he mentioned like having it cut in Bennett, that's already in existence.
Further south entry into the old...
Yes, right next to Betsy's house? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure I'm clear, because he's referencing it like it's a new cut. It's not. It's already in existence.
No, but once a property changes use, oftentimes our friends at I.D.O.T. will say, well, wait a minute. If it's changing use, they may or may not provide the access that once existed.
Got it.
So...
Even though it's, okay, so I understand. I should make sure it's clear that that, that it wasn't anything new, that it's the one that's already in existence. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does he plan on building a sidewalk on my property?
No, sir. Sir, we can't speak out unless you recognize, so forgive me. Mr. Hitchcock, would you care to address the survey results that I briefly alluded to earlier from Mrs. Stocking?
I'd be pleased to. We did, we did two surveys, one very well and one very poorly. The, I'll take credit for the poorly done one, and I'll give the credit to my teammates for the well-done version. The first survey, we were really interested in finding out what people knew about the site, how they viewed it in the context of the downtown, and what they thought about the downtown. In the second survey, what we wanted to do, and it was, we have, let me back up, we had one survey included in our scope of services, and that was the well-done survey. The second survey was something that I had this idea while, kind of on the fly, on Wednesday afternoon, thought, gosh, if we can figure out how to frame up a question using the criteria, it might give us some interesting feedback that evening, sort of a live polling, if you will. Give us some live feedback about the, about the participants, not the community, because it would only be the participants, having seen the whole presentation, what their reaction was to, or how we might grade the various schemes using the criteria that we developed on Monday, Monday evening. Well, we didn't have, because we were racing to get prepared, we thought, okay, we'll go ahead and do this on the fly as we get deeper into the evening, which was a terrific mistake because we only got a very few results. They're, they're not statistically valid. The comments that we received, we certainly read those and appreciated, we heard concerns about scale, very similar to what we've heard this evening, some concerns about scale and, you know, what is the Geneva brand and so on. But anyway, the, the, the survey was, the second survey was my intention on the fly, didn't do it well, wish I hadn't done it at all, and consequently, we haven't posted anything online because there really isn't anything that's valid to post. What we have concluded is that we're, in fact, the survey results from the first survey, which is very well done, got tremendous statistically valid results. Those results are online, but they're also not interpreted. We need to put a little introductory remark with that, so we're going to fix that piece. And then we're going to put something online after our local team reviews it that explains what in the world we are up to on the second survey and why it's not being posted. That was a long and windy answer, but that is what happened with the second survey.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I believe I've addressed all the questions. I turn it over to you for questions or comments, and...
Are you recognizing me?
Well, it depends. I'll grant some leeway, but what, is there...
You missed my question.
Was it with respect to the view?
Yes.
There was a question asked by Mrs. Ward, is that correct?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward, with respect to, thank you for, thank you for calling me out. I appreciate it. I've got it right here. Let's see, it says, now, this is going to be subject to opinion, of course, but nevertheless, I believe your question was, the view to downtown is still preserved. How did you come up with that theory, more or less? Now, that's subject to subjectivity, of course, but I would certainly ask Mr. Hitchcock, with respect to the process and how, professionally speaking, the view is preserved, I would only argue that it depends on how you define view, I guess. So forgive me, Mrs. Ward.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Again, tricky question because, you know, what I think is a good view and others think is a good view, we could debate till Christmas. And at any given point, whether you're going eastbound or westbound, the view, of course, changes constantly as a motorist, as you're, or as a pedestrian cyclist, as you're traveling along State Street, this view is constantly changing. along State Street, this view is constantly changing. This particular image happens to be in this particular spot. Unfortunately, I wasn't hit from behind, because that would have really ruined my day. The, in this circumstance, what you can see, very plainly, is the existing building on, right on the corner, and you can just kind of see very faintly, right kind of underneath the number one, you can see the landmarked stone structure, and if you really, really look hard, there's a little tiny glimpse of water. And again, that is in this particular viewpoint, standing on the street, very carefully holding my cellphone camera, so that I get the picture that I want. The reality is, as you travel up and down the street, except in this location, you can scarcely see the water.
There's more water, there's more water than you saw in the last town.
Right, right. And on, and behind, well, right here, this is, this is the building. Right here, there's a little glimpse, I think, of the river. And again, as you get, as you approach the bridge, you get various perspectives. It's a useful exercise to look at. But in some cases, particularly as you get closer, because of the way the guardrail is constructed, you really don't see the water at all. But, but the, the point, I think, and that's, that sounds defensive, and it's not at all. It's just that the perspective changes. The point, I think, that, that all of the speakers were getting at is there, there clearly is a view of the downtown. And as you go downhill, particularly if you're a resident, you know, as you're going downhill and you see this bridge, you know that the Fox River is right there. So it's like, gosh, this is the Fox River Valley, this is the Fox River in our town. And what you see showcased very attractively on the other side are existing buildings, some stone and other materials, that have been very beautifully done. And then you see in the background some of the other buildings, some of which you might consider to be local landmarks. And so the question, of course, is how much of this view, you know, might be preserved or enhanced in the future? And again, this is a shot in one spot, and so this doesn't speak to all the views up and down the street. This simply addresses what you may or may not see in any given locations. We tried to duplicate that image, so that you see Geneva Pa-, excuse me, Geneva Place on the right, and obviously, that was extremely intentional, so that we could get that perspective, that, that scale reference. And then we showed this blob, which is intended to illustrate the entitled building mass, how much of the river and that downtown scene you might see in the future. And then below it, we illustrated our recommendation, which, again, tapers toward the south and also tapers down, we think, very respectfully and attractively to the river, so that you can see more of that vista that seems to be very desirable. What I can tell you with certainty is that going through the entitlement process, we would continue to illustrate these views in much greater detail, and overlaying them on the actual photography or the, the background, so that you can see, maybe from a couple of different viewpoints, what that may look like. So that's the view.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock. Mrs. Ward?
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you again for reminding me. Forgive me. From the council, Alderman Lardra, I saw you had your hand up. Alderman Ruby, Alderman Clemmons.
The challenge has been and continues to be meeting the objectives of multiple stakeholders, not just for today, but for tomorrow, and indeed, many tomorrows. With this site, with the historic district that we just discussed last week, and with the upcoming zoning discussion that lies ahead of us, the task of channeling the unstoppable force of change and the directions that meet the demands of today, while respecting our past and positioning us well for the future, is the challenge that we all face. The comments I heard at the first charrette meeting seem to define the context that I understand. The group I was in summed it up with the phrase iconic but respectful of the Geneva brand and the existing neighborhood. I got the same sense from each of the other groups that reported out that night, essentially recognition that this site represents the opportunity to add something new to Geneva, but the desire to do so in a way that respects our heritage and the character of the neighborhood, specifically in the downtown generally, was definitely made clear that night. It was certainly made clear here tonight. But the charrette group on Thursday didn't seem to see it the same way. They summarized participant comments into six objectives, which we looked at tonight: attractiveness, connected, catalytic, financially sustainable, environmentally sustainable, culturally sustainable, and respectful. In terms of attractive, I like the image you just put up there. I found particularly interesting that the By Right is a big blob, but the current proposal is a very nice-looking building. We have no idea if it's going to look like that. There's not enough specifics at this point to understand if the proposal is going to be attractive, not attractive, or anything else. Regarding connectivity, publicly accessible river, front walkable, bikable, and drivable, the proposal seems to have minimal public space on the site itself. What public space is there, as was mentioned tonight, is already there, and it's already public. So there's nothing being added by the proposal itself. Perhaps some small public space near where the current landmark exists, but not much more. I assume that with less building coverage, we would have more empty space to work out a more obvious and inviting form of public access. Walkable and bikable, yes, but that's because it already is. And then drivable, I'm not so sure. What little parking is there, 1.25 per unit, is all private. In terms of catalytic, the way it was defined at the Thursday charrette had a statement about independent of other public and private investments. That wasn't in tonight's presentation, so I don't know what changed there. But as far as promoting additional surrounding investment, something that will spur further development in, in this area that I call the valley and heading east, that living space will strengthen the downtown in general is a concept that we've embraced for years. But the idea that more living space is better is not clear to me. I think too much of a good thing can be problematic. We heard tonight some firsthand evidence of the challenges that Naperville, Naperville faces, and I've heard anecdotally similar statements about St. Charles. Interesting thing about catalytic, what I, what I heard tonight was that, that the restaurant would not be the same type of catalyst. And then that started to cause me to wonder, what is it we're looking to be a catalyst for? Part of what we want is restaurants, but if restaurants aren't viable, then I don't know what we're trying to stimulate exactly. So too much of a good catalyst is problematic if it fundamentally changes the things that make Geneva unique today. Financial sustainability, generating a reasonable rate, rate, return on investment. Of the four concepts that were presented at the charrette, this one, I think, had the highest return on investment, but it was not the only economically viable alternative. As an alternative, you've seen the challenges and problems that it runs into, so I'm struggling to find out, to figure out how this proposal reflects the community's input from the whole exercise. Cultural sustainability, this gets to where I'm, I'm struggling to see how it fits. The objective seems to have been, so promoting the Geneva brand, this doesn't seem to fit with the Geneva brand, at least the way I define it. Recognizing Geneva's history, I'm not seeing the connection to our heritage there. Consistent with the Geneva lifestyle, I recognize that we have to do something to add some diversity to that lifestyle, some apartment living as opposed to single-family homes, homes for young people, homes for seniors, and all of that. But I don't see the need to do that in a six-story behemoth of a concept. And then in terms of respectful, the phrase that was used at the charrette was that it meets or exceeds stakeholder expectations. Tonight, we have that, that it considers stakeholder and owner expectations. I think that, from, from my perspective, it meets some stakeholder expectations, but not all of them. And in fact, what I see is that we've kind of got our priorities a little bit mixed up. I, I think that everybody at the charrette heard all the same things, but some people felt that certain aspects were less important than others. And for that reason, the fact that, the fact that everything that was heard was identified, it was listed up here, if not immediately evident, in this proposal, I remain hopeful and confident that the continued exercise will result in something that we can all get behind and embrace. Colin, your call for a new survey, I don't think we need it. We heard tonight the same things we heard at the charrettes.
To not engage the audience in conversation, so as not to-
I apologize. Mayor Burns, Colin's comment about a new survey, I don't think we need it. We heard tonight the exact same things we heard at the three charrette meetings. It's known, sorry, it's known. Now I'm messed up. We, we, we know what's important. We, we know what we need to do to fit this into, to combine the, the possibilities of exciting change with the constructs or the context of respecting our heritage and being consistent with the Geneva brand. We heard some of it tonight. We heard multiple references to staking our height at the height of the Harrington. Pick something, anyway. I, I think the Harrington sounds good, if it's not the Harrington and some other thing, to, to define the envelope that we want this change to take place within. Doesn't have to be direction setting, it doesn't have to be bigger than anything out there, it doesn't have to be outsized to work for everybody, but I think that everybody has to take a little bit less of what they want. And so I'm hopeful that the entitlement process, as we call it, is where this solidifying of the concept is going to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Ruby, then Alderman Clemmons, then Alderman Swanson.
Thank you. Alderman Lardra, I loved your comments. Thank you. I loved your comments. I agree with all of your comments. Just a, a quick question that was asked by, by the audience that didn't get answered, that, that I personally would like to hear the answer to as well. The definition of transient retail and some examples.
Certainly. We can either ask Mr. DeGroot or Mr. Hitchcock, but why don't we go with the charrette team? Mr. Hitchcock and Bridgette, if you would kindly address that, and I can certainly give examples of that.
I'm going to let the expert address it.
Okay, Bridgette, thank you.
Today, in retail, leases have gotten very short, and they've gotten very seasonal. So the kind of retail I'm anticipating here would be shops that would open, that could sell flowers in the springtime, have holiday decorations, things like that, in the right season for it. What we're envisioning is very small spaces that someone who maybe made pottery somewhere wanted to rent. There was a time when, in the city, in Garfield Park, they took old horse stalls and did this, and had almost, it was very creatively done. And for a bicycle trail, food can be really important, and in the morning, someone might sell coffee out of one of them, and then it may transition to hot dogs later in the afternoon. And I've seen this work many, many places, and it really is what's happening in retail today, is a small, we're talking about very small shops, 250, 300 square feet, and it's temporary and managed by an organization.
Thank you. Just one more question. I, I recall at the charrette meetings that a coffee shop specifically was cited as not possible, that it couldn't, it would not be sustainable.
It's not a coffee shop. It's someone who would open there to satisfy the bicycles-
Okay.
-in the morning. It's more of a stall-
Sure, okay.
-kind of thing. So it's not there all day where someone comes in and works on their computer-
Right.
-during the day there.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Alderman Clemmons, then Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Alderman Bruno?
All right, so this is a tough one. Alderman Lardra, I agree, well put. You enumerated a lot of items in the charrette, and I won't do the same, but I will say, I think a lot of us felt the same frustrations from the charrette process. I know in my one-on-one interview, nothing, nothing I said was anywhere in here, and I think that's true for most people. So I understand that, that's frustrating, but here we are. So the question is, what do we, what do we do now to move forward? You know, we, we're, we're very fortunate with where we live, as so many of you pointed out tonight, and we have the, you know, enviable position of having a very distinct character and identity here in Geneva. But along with that comes the unenviable position of trying to figure out how we balance preservation with progress, and importantly, on the fulcrum of private property rights. And that's what makes this all very difficult. My concern tonight, if we don't move forward, is that if we, if we all walk away from this right now, if we close the door, I don't know when it will open again. I, I fear that this would sit here for years and years, doing nothing for, for the majority of, of the stakeholders. And it's my hope that, as Alderman Lardra said, we have a continued exercise. We're moving forward here, we're not approving a specific project, we are giving parameters, a parameter space within which to work, to have our planning commission review things. And it's, it's hopefully in that, in that exercise, as we move forward, where we can still find some compromise and, and be partners in, in this process. So that, that's my hope for this. And so I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Excuse me, Alderman Swanson, then Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to take us back to the initial approval of doing the charrette, and the purpose of it was to create community consensus on an acceptable course of action to design for the future retail, lodging, residential, and/or mixed-use redevelopment of the property. And in the opening line of the presentation that Mr. Hitchcock did, I believe he stated, and I don't have the exact wording, that he considered it a successful charrette. And, and I guess my question for Mr. Hitchcock is, given that the purpose of this was to create community consensus, and it sounds like we don't have that as of yet, how do you define success? And how will we get there going forward? And I guess the second part of that is, how much can this design change from now through the end of the entitlement process? If I could ask that of Mr. Hitchcock?
Mr. Hitchcock, and I would also ask Mr. DeGroot to come to the podium, because while certainly Mr. Hitchcock can address the charrette itself, and we've had lengthy conversations about whether it was perfect or perhaps lacking, and I think we all acknowledge that there were some areas that were lacking, with respect to the regulatory process, I think Mr. DeGroot's probably best to address that process, short of saying, "Oh, yeah, it's a guarantee that we'll find this kumbaya community census." So, Mr. Hitchcock?
Sure, Mayor. And Alderman Swanson, thanks for the comments. To be sure, and, and I'm not trying to be cute with wordsmithing, we've understood from the beginning that our engagement includes the opportunity analysis, which included the charrette, and it includes the entitlement piece, which is the piece that's right in front of us. And our purpose has been unchanged from day one, which is to produce a consensus redevelopment strategy in the engagement. To be sure- To be sure, I was very hopeful that we might find that in the, in the charrette, but maybe that's my perpetually optimistic glass-half-full self. So, I consider the charrette to be successful in that, really, except for consensus on the strategy, we harvested an enormous amount of information about the resources and the marketplace and the stakeholders. We synthesized a lot of it, we talked about a lot of it, we got a lot of terrific feedback. We, as a team, now understand what can and can't work on the site physically. As you all clearly understand, we don't have any detail on it at all, and we have, there's a lot of ground to cover as it relates to what is it, what might end up in public ownership and what might not. But anyway, because that all occurred over a very short period of time, as opposed to getting stretched out in a traditional kind of iterative process, that part was very successful. Though, how, you know, so how do we define success? In this case, I'm going to say we got a lot of what we wanted, but maybe not the grand The question about how do we, how do we get to yes, is, this is a critical part of it this evening, and I deeply appreciate that everyone's giving their very thoughtful comments. What we, as a team, will really rely on is council members, because you are half of the sponsors, is we're relying on council members being as specific as they can possibly be about how you all define attractive, how you all define Geneva's brand. And while it's helpful to talk in generalities about it's lovely and it's quaint, we need to get as specific as we possibly can, which is what staff has attempted to do, I think very, very well, by the way, with the resolution framework, by laying out some very specific parameters. And again, forgive me while I scroll through this very rapidly. So, the, again, these are paraphrasing what you have in front of you, but each of these items attempts to define, for the time being, what each of these components should be in a successful consensus-built solution. So to be, you know, just as clear as I can possibly be, if council believes that these uses are not the right uses, then it will be helpful for us to know what you think the right uses ought to be, or said more positively, if you think that these are the right uses, we would gladly welcome, in fact, if it's helpful, not this minute, but when the mayor suggests it's the right time, if we want to go through these item by item and try to build consensus on every one of them, we're happy to do that. We see this as a vital part of the process.
I would caution Mr. Hitchcock, respectfully speaking, our charge tonight is not to legislate the enumerated parameters, per se, or seek consensus in such detail, because that is, in essence, if we advance this, the job of the plan commission. They are the ones who should dig deeper into this, whatever is advanced tonight. If there's a general amendment to be made, of course, that can be considered, but with respect to, and the council knows this terminology, too much in the weeds, then we are, in essence, doing the plan commission's job, and I think that's not fair to the process, if in fact we all believe the process is, and should be, kept.
Of course, and I appreciate the clarification. Just last, if I may, Alderman, you asked about how much might change. I'm certainly not able to speak on behalf of either sponsor. Alls I can do is take input from both of them, and so I'm presuming that both sponsors are listening very intently to see, maybe even starting to wrestle with where compromise might be, but for me to speculate on that, I'm simply not able to at this time.
I understand. I guess from my standpoint, I see a successful charrette as inviting everyone to the table, which I think we did, and everyone had a chance to speak. However, I think everyone needs to feel that they were heard, and I'm not certain we accomplished that. And because of that, I think we're hearing what we're hearing today about scale and about view. And I think one of the alternative scenario, when we had four scenarios, one of them was slightly smaller, and maintained the view of the city as you had westbound on State Street, and it was considered an economically viable alternative. And that went by the wayside, and I think a different scenario, or a scaled-back scenario, probably would check a lot more people's boxes, and that surprised me that we didn't consider that. So, I wanted to ask, the question I'm asking is, do we have options to scale it back so that people do feel heard? So we go back to that one slide where you can see the courthouse, and it's obscured by the six-story building, and if it were a three-story building, or if it didn't have the hockey stick piece on State Street, we would still have that viewpoint. So there are many things that could change here that I think would improve this whole project for a lot of people, so.
Thank you. I'm certain we'll consider that. Thank you.
No need for Mr. DeGroot to speak, I don't believe it, based on that, so. I believe it's Alderman Bruno's opportunity to speak?
It is.
Yes, sir, and then...
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot going on here. Alderman Swanson started to touch on one of the issues, and I'd like to maybe get a clearer answer from Mr. Hitchcock, that option four over option three, is there something, and for the public, the option three was the smaller residential without the hockey stick What turned the decision of the working group to select option four over option three?
Again, pardon me one second while we'll tee that up, so. Okay, one, two, three, four.
Maybe I have the numbers.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, that's why I'm doing this. Clarity is really crucial tonight. You're saying, why fundamentally this is what we worked, the version of this is what we presented, as a preference versus this?
Correct, but they both made economic sense, from what I recall from our meetings.
A point of clarification, and I'm not fudging on this one iota, during the course of the charrette, and I've got Bridgette standing behind me to back me up on this, during the course of the charrette, we were working very rapidly on multiple concepts simultaneously, and Bridgette was doing a phenomenal job doing the math on four of these simultaneously, so that was really quite a challenge. And so, just to be clear, the number that we, and this is, just in full disclosure, this is taken right out of the charrette process, so this version shows greater TIF increment on the bottom line than what we presently think that would illustrate. But again, given everything that we had at the moment on Wednesday, this is what we, on a preliminary basis, we thought that was the case. What you might notice, it's probably worth showing, frankly, on this version, we had almost $19 million, and then, whoops, excuse me, and then on this strategy, you might say, gee whiz, what happened? Well, what happened was, is that we refined our math, and we had better numbers by the time we got here. So I'm not trying to sell anything, I'm just trying to clarify how in the world we got to where we got. So your fundamental question is, why, just for the sake of the conversation, why something like this, that has the light of the now-famous hockey stick on it, versus this, which does not? Several things. But fundamentally, we were excited about the catalytic potential financially, about the potential for funding an array of what we think might be very costly riverfront improvements, that would be hugely benefit, we believe hugely beneficial to the entire community, and specifically the downtown in this area. So it wasn't so much about, oh boy, let's go for the bigger pot of gold, it was more like, how can we deploy these resources in ways that really benefit the TIF district? And not only the riverfront, but again, TIF-eligible projects, utility improvements or street improvements, and closing gap, and so on and so on. So we liked that. And, and, and we just, we, I don't know, we sort of got to a point where, between running out of time and trying to have what we thought were clearly distinctive options to choose from, we set this one aside and worked with the one that had the greater yield, and I don't know, if I'm overlooking something, team, that I'm, that's escaping me, but that was, that was pretty much our rationale.
Thank you. While you're up there, can you roughly point out what the property line of this?
Oh boy, yes, and it is hard to see, but it is very faint, right there.
Okay.
Right here, runs up, and then there's this little jog where there's the right-of-way extended, and it runs down the street, of course, and back down toward the bridge.
So that the, and I want to point that out as a point of clarification for the public. The public space we know on that side of the pond, as we'll call it, that is public because that was the former property owner giving access to another retail space, the gazebo down there. There's, there's no obligation by the property owner to make that public space, that is private property.
I appreciate your bringing that up, that was really not a question, but you're exactly correct. And to answer, though I haven't been asked to answer this, a previous comment about that there wasn't any new public space created in the, in this, again, forgive my scrolling through this rapidly, in this version, round numbers, there's something like 25% to 30% of the 1.8 acres, we believe could be dedicated for public use. So, again, lots to figure out.
And the majority of that being in the floodplain, which is...
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of a, it's the handy thing to give away, I suppose, but I value public resources, public access to the waterfront a great deal. Don't go away yet.
Okay.
Let's see, I won't repeat some other questions, so I might hop around some of my notes here. In this process, you said what you think what went right, and you might have alluded to, but just, what do you think, what things would you like to do over?
Gosh, you, we scarcely know each other, but you know me well. I'm always very critical of myself, and I'm not supposed to point out things I'd like to do over. What I would love to have back, of course, is that second survey, because it was well-intentioned and it was a disaster. And so it looks like, it looks like we're sweeping something under the table, and it's just because it's, because it was so poorly done, it's sort of pointless to trot out. So that's, that's the, that's the big one. The other piece, I suppose, and we wrestled with this way back when we were negotiating the scope, should this be four or five days? And frankly, by the end of four days, everybody was exhausted, and I dare say you were probably pretty tired of putting up with all of that as well. It might have been wise if we could go back and re-engineer that, to actually do, and I don't know how on earth we'd pull it off, but to do some kind of council-only workshop on Friday morning, so everything was fresh in our minds, and go down this list, point by point, which is kind of difficult to do tonight, and say, okay, how do all the, because you're the inner circle, you're the half of the sponsors, how do you define attractive? And really nail that down.
And thank you, and I ask that because this is the first time we've undertaken something like this, certainly on this scale, and I think this, this process, however it turns out, will inform us as to how and when we do another one, if ever. Let's see, I mean, make sure, I'll just get to questions I might need you on.
Sure.
I guess I'll say, while you're up here, is, there does, it happens in every project, but there's a fixation on architecture. When you put out some draft concept, that's what, you could have put in, you could have put gray boxes there, and then people would be upset that, you know, well, we can't make any decisions on gray boxes. You put architecture there, and they fixate on architecture when the architecture is not fixed, and I think, I think that's an area where we can evolve to get some more consensus I think, I think you are relieved.
Thank you.
I, I feel like the, you know, I read through the analysis of the historic building, the blacksmith shop, it seems cursory, but as this goes through HPC and Plan Commission, I know our ordinance permits us getting our own engineering analysis through the HPC review, I believe. Is that, is that correct? You know, in this plan, if it moves ahead, I don't know what kind of latitude we have, and I think there is a fair amount of latitude. We've defined the envelope of what we, or the outside parameters within this resolution, and I think there is room to, to adjust that, to achieve some things, and provide some, some relief to some of the community. Talked about architecture. For myself, I look at this as housing diversity, when it comes up. I am supportive of higher-density residential for our aging population and our younger residents. Then it gets, it gets pretty expensive here. Was the, was the charrette worth it? This is a pretty expensive vote we have here, I believe, is, we have been invoiced 108,000? 106,000 so far. If we pull the ripcord on, on this, and this is not an argument for or against anything, if we pull the ripcord on this, the city's on the hook for $106,000.
Alderman Bruno, just incorrect, the city is on the hook, if you will, for one-half of that amount? The total costs invoiced to date is 106,000, the city of Geneva is responsible for 53,000 of that 106.
But if we pull the ripcord...
Yes.
Does that not make...
That's correct, yes.
...us liable for the entire amount?
Effective this time and this date at this hour.
Right, right. But as I've been, as I approached this from the beginning, this is a supercritical property. It is, I've always felt it worth taking the gamble with some serious dollars to get a serious, well-accepted solution. And I think, sitting here, I think there is enough latitude in the continuing process with Plan Commission, with HPC, and further architectural review. We'll certainly get a lot closer. We still, it still may not make a lot of people happy, and it will become more expensive to pull the ripcord at that point, but this is a critical property, and at this point, I'm, I'm prepared to support it. I think it's important to note, too, there's a lot of, there's certainly... I think it's important to note, too, there's a lot of, there's certainly some concern about the loss of the blacksmith shop. A vote to move this forward is not a vote for demolition. It's in the resolution that an "I" vote tonight does not authorize demolition permits for that building. So it's still there until this plan is resolved. I would put a finer point, too, on the concept of the river view. I think we've talked about it as the gateway view. I think some people consider that to be the view of the river. I think it is really the view of the riverfront that's important. I'm quite challenged, losing sight of the courthouse, losing sight of half of the Harrington. As this gets massaged, I would certainly like to see more, a wider view there, and I would trade some height at the other end to preserve that view. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Burkhardt.
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably a question for the city attorney. So if we vote on this tonight, we're being asked to approve this parameters or the envelope. 120 rental apartments, a maximum, 8 to 12 townhomes, 2,000 feet of commercial space, the height being at least, or up to 60 feet, sorry, up to 60 feet, setback at 10 feet, and a bunch of other kind of details. How does that not handcuff the plan commission if they decide 60 feet is too high for this development? They say if they try to work it down to 52, 51, how does the developer not say that city council voted on all this, 60 feet, you know, 120 apartments? I just, I cannot get my head around that.
Alderman, it's up to, and those are the extensions, but they can be massaged down. Certainly, the plan commission has the restrictions of by right as it is. So how they balance this project with the parameters the council provides, assuming those are the parameters, they can still undertake all of their obligations and should do so, as well as the HPC as well. These are maximums not to exceeds. That's it.
But the developer could walk away, then, if they decide that they didn't want to massage anything down?
I don't want to get into the contract, but as of right now, all this is, is an envelope or a conceptual not-to-exceed maximum. And if it doesn't pass, it's private property, the developer can choose its next step without this council's participation.
So if it didn't, so if it got, you know, if it came to the plan commission, pretty much as-is, and the plan commission voted it down, what's the next step?
I don't want to get into hypotheticals, because that's down the line, and to your point, you don't want to handcuff them.
Right.
I don't want to do that in the inverse as well. So that, for purposes of right now, the question is, is this envelope, concept, parameters not to exceed, good enough to continue down the line, so that the other groups, which have evidentiary requirements, the plan commission, they induce evidence to do their job?
So they would be able to vote something like this down without being told?
They have to exercise their discretion in the ordinary course.
Okay. All right.
Just a point of clarification. As an example, if the plan commission felt that, whatever, six stories would have an adverse effect on surrounding properties, they could cite that as one of the factors that would require something less.
I think Mr. Degoo could probably speak to the parameters, but they certainly have all of their rights.
I'm just trying to find how they have room to negotiate down from what the city has already said is.
Describe, David, just the PUD process, the special use standards, et cetera, that governs the plan commission's regulatory authority, whether it be this or any other project.
This is a very similar process that we undertook with Datsun Place when that was constructed. It was first a resolution set forth by the council establishing basic development parameters. Then it went through the normal public hearing process, where the plan commission negotiated parking ratios, building heights, dwelling unit counts, all of those same items to address in finer detail, the concerns that we've heard this evening and throughout the charrette process. So that all remains in place. They still have to evaluate the requests against the standards and the ordinance, and based on evidence and testimony provided in the public hearings. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, I'm still got the floor. But I gave it to Craig. So this would be for Mr. Hitchcock, and I'm still struggling with, as Alderman Bruno said, how we got to this as the preferred one instead of the one-legged one. So when we did the charrette, obviously, I'd never been through it. I was, I really envisioned it as kind of a brainstorming session, that we were going to see a lot of different looks for this property, maybe some that were a little off the wall, but, you know, and some that were real conservative. So when we got those four on Wednesday night, and one was a straw man restaurant proposal, obviously, that was, you know, not going to be successful, and which I feel like ignores the fact that this is not Geneva Commons, this is, you know, prime riverfront property. We do not have riverfront dining in Geneva. This is, could be highly desirable for the right restaurant place. And then the other three were all residential. I was just disappointed that we didn't see anything like what's envisioned in the downtown stationery master plan for this site, which was, "A redevelopment concept that keeps the banquet and restaurant use and provides a layout that makes better use of the river frontage, with parking that could support the addition of a lodge or boutique hotel with outdoor dining along the river. This concept would allow for the redevelopment of the corner to service an attractive gateway into downtown Geneva." We put a lot of stock into our planning, strategic planning, downtown stationery master plan. We go back to this again and again. Why did we not see a concept that included a hotel or event space?
Well, the simple answer is, is that one of the sponsors owns the hotel on the other side of the river and has no interest in building a hotel on this site.
Thank you for your honesty. And event space, same thing, right? Catty corner is an event space.
Yeah, we looked, I mean, early on in the day, on Tuesday, we looked at a universe of possibilities, and there were some, call them straw dogs or whatever you wish, there were some that we didn't think it was even worthwhile to illustrate, because they simply had no sponsor support. We did, we illustrated the restaurant site largely because we wanted to illustrate that of, and this is Bridget's expertise, but of all of the food and beverage concepts that are presently viable in the marketplace, they sort of fall into two camps. They're either going into existing space, or they're remodeling some other footprint, which we don't have here, obviously, or they're being built from the ground up. And of the handful across the region that are being built from the ground up, they all have similar characteristics, namely, they're big. And so we said, gee, I wonder if a big restaurant fits on this site? And it does. Not the 10,000 to 15,000 square feet the pinstripes and some others want, but 7,500, 8,000 square feet. We can, the question is, can you park it? And yes, we can park it. And we all uniformly thought, gosh, this is not doing anything for us visually, and we think catalytically, and the math was a mess. And so we dismissed that, yes.
I was sure we were going to see a concept that night that would have, you know, ground floor parking, a restaurant, and a couple levels of apartments or condos above it. I'm just amazed we didn't get to discuss that at all, obviously, with so many people wanting that restaurant, riverfront. Yeah, just so much riverfront dining. We heard that so much that Monday night, you know? And I get that the standalone is challenging, and I understand it's a challenging lot. I'm just, I was just disappointed in the concepts we did get to see.
And Alderman, I'm sympathetic to your anxiety, or your frustration about that, not anxiety, your frustration, because when you hear so often from the public, I want this, I want that, gosh, I love to eat, I'll go here, I'll go there, it's easy, it's really easy for planners to mix up what people want with how they behave. And we have an expert on our team who understands how people behave in the marketplace, and that's where we put our stock. What people want, while we respect that deeply, you may recall that bullseye that I showed on an earlier presentation to council, the folks at the middle of that bullseye are the property owners. What they want there maybe counts the most, tempered and influenced hugely by what the sponsors want. You're that next ring. So, and in this circumstance, which is really uncommon and tremendous, what the community's doing, you're in this together, and so what you want and what can be supported on the site is enormously important. And then what the regulators want and what the neighbors and other residents want is interesting, but what we're trying to always care, trying to understand is, how are decisions made about what folks want really influenced by how the marketplace behaves? And that's the line that we need to follow, because at the end of the day, the property owners need to build with confidence something that the market will support, so that it's beneficial for all of us, and that they can get financing on, because they can convince the lenders that it is a marketable solution. And while residents may say, gee, I would love to have a restaurant there, maybe there'll be some little something or another in that 2,000-square-foot space. Our expert is convinced that that's very unlikely, but who knows? Maybe there's a 1% chance that that happens, and if it does, great.
And otherwise, it's going to be an amenity for the apartment building, correct?
Possibly, yes.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you very much.
Alderman, Mr. Patzel?
Good evening. My name is David Patzel, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois, on behalf of the Shodin Family Foundation. I'd like to further comment on a couple of your questions. You raised a question about why not a hotel. We are in the hotel business. We obviously own the one across the river. We have owned a couple national flag hotels in the last several years. If you kept track of things going on in DeKalb County or Kane County, we were proposing hotels in downtown DeKalb. Unfortunately, the hotel market and costs of hotels and the overbuilt hotels are pushing room rates down. We did conduct a hotel study ourself many years ago and found that it was financially infestable, so that's why we had said no to a hotel. Regarding a banquet facility, we looked at that as well. With a banquet facility, you have a large surge of parking demand. Where do you park that for a banquet facility? One option is deck it. Okay, so now you deck the parking for a banquet facility. How do you pay for the deck? Banquet facility can't afford to pay for a deck in the suburban market. So those two are financial questions that we believe, it's totally, it's not financially sound to offer those products. If this city council is willing to write a check, and please keep in mind that when you build a banquet facility, it's not going to generate enough increment to pay for a parking deck, and there probably are not enough TIF-able items in a hotel that TIF can pay for, if you're, the city council is willing to write a check in form of a grant or subsidy for those projects, we'd be more than willing to go back and look at those. But please keep in mind that it's just not on day one for those dollars. It's a continued operation, and that public funds may be sought or needed to continue to publicly fund those various operations. The last one, there was a comment that she had made about a restaurant, then with some residential above it, and the site plan doesn't work. How do you, you have two different parking demands, how do you park the residence and park the restaurant? And we don't believe having a restaurant with parking that is on the east side of Route 20, on the east side of the former jewelry store, and asking people to walk across Route 25 in the evening for dinner, that, we don't believe that that works well. So Mr. Hitchcock gave you an answer that the developer said no. There's a little bit more to the reason why there was a no, but certainly, we can be convinced to perhaps change that to a yes if the city council is willing to say, we will contribute, irrespective of whether it generates the TIF or not.
So I guess if we were going to, if this was going to be a mix of residential to start with, I do wonder why we went through the charrette, because it just feels like it just, the charrette ended up being an exercise in just the mix of apartment and townhomes on the site. And maybe that was my misunderstanding going into the charrette, that I had pie-eyed dreams or something, you know?
I don't.
Do you feel like the charrette brought forward something that you couldn't have brought forward two years ago?
I do, because I think it was a third party looking at the site. I could stand up here all day long with a petition in front of you and say, look, I can't park a restaurant and apartments on that site. And you could sit back and say, I believe you can.
Gotcha.
Now you've had a third party that has not done work for Shodin that says, I believe that their site plan or site planning process will say that, you know what, it can't be done. Similar to the hotel. You want to do a hotel? Sure, we can put a hotel there, we can put a parking deck there, and, but then, again, how do you financially do it? Which is the second part. You got a pretty picture, which a charrette will generate, but then the critical part is, now let's look at the finances of it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Alderman Kaven, then Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I think Alderman Burkhardt kind of hit on what it was that I was going to inquire about, is I'm looking at the verbiage that's in here as well, that maximum of 60 feet. And I understand that there may be, you know, a way for us to massage that a little bit through the entitlement process, but I guess what I'm struggling here with is, and I know Mr. City Attorney, you said the same thing, that by approving this, that doesn't necessarily mean that would be 60. But if we're saying that through this charrette process, we are okaying up to 60 feet, and the developer in question, even as we're going through the entitlement process, says, no, our plans don't work with it being less than 60 feet, I don't see what recourse we would wind up having if they ultimately came back and said, well, you approved it, it's part of the charrette process, so we need to have it be 60 feet. What happens if that's, what happens if that's the response that we get, and then we're here three months from now? And again, I think we received a lot of very good information through the charrette to this point. But what recourse do we have at that? What recourse do we have at that point? If that's the way that it winds up going, and I know we don't want to deal in hypotheticals, but I see that as being a pretty real possibility that that's where we wind up.
The short answer to your statement, and I will certainly defer to the city attorney as well, and I'm not going to be technical nor legal ease here, the recourse you have is your vote.
Well, fair enough. So I guess then my second point would be, all the other things that people have talked about, wanting banquet facility, wanting a restaurant, you know, and listening to Mr. Patzel, Mr. Hitchcock, I think they've explained very well why those items may not feasibly work. I'm quite confident that it will wind up being some form of residential, and if that's what needs to wind up being there, and that's what can only fiscally work, I'm fine with that, but I think a lot of what we've heard, and my concern is, is while I'm okay with it being residential, the overall footprint and size and what a lot of people have said today, that's definitely a concern for me. So if we have, if we already know that those things can't go there, essentially, I know we'll still be at the table, but what benefit does the city really have by continuing the process further if a lot of the things that people wanted, we've already pretty much determined that those don't, those don't work. So is it? work. So is it worth spending the additional amount of money, of the city's money, to find out that maybe this is exactly where we wind up at? And yes, we still then do have our vote to vote down, if that was the way that that happened, but I don't know. Based off of what I'm seeing up there, I'm not 100% certain that the risk is worth the reward. So those are my, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I guess one of my questions is very similar to what the previous few council members have touched upon, which is, what recourse the council has if the, if the plans presented are not ones that we like. So let me, let me back up a little bit. I did have a question written out, and it's a little bit of a repeat, but please bear with me. So if the Shodin Family Foundation decided to maximize the width of this development, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't the plan still need to be reviewed and approved by the city council, the plan commission, all of that? And that, so...
Yes, yes, it would. Well, let me summarize. Yeah, by advancing the resolution as prepared tonight, it affords both the Historic Preservation Commission and the Plan Commission, and then ultimately the city council for additional review.
So to Alderman Kaven's point, if I'm getting his message correctly, wouldn't that, wouldn't the plans go through those three legislative bodies anyway without the charrette? Wasn't that the case with like, for example, the Marquette development? And how did that compare? That, that property never made it to city council for final approval.
Incorrect.
So tell me.
And I know it's a sordid story at best, but many of the council members who were present may recall that there was a joint committee meeting of the Plan Commission and city council. Our friends, our would-be friends over there at the site on West State Street presented concept plans, at which time, the Plan Commission and city council meeting in joint session said, "We like what we see. Go forth and develop concept based on these parameters." And the result was a split decision by the Plan Commission. When it came to the council, considerable tumult erupted, and they ultimately withdrew their petition.
Okay, so you guess, you can't really compare the two situations, because those, the plans for the Marquette building, which again, the public was very much, many members of the public were against due to the large scale of that proposed development. Those plans never came to the council. So we don't have...
They did come to the council. They came to the council after a split decision by the Plan Commission. The council did what the council does, and engaged the developer in discussion. The developer chose to withdraw, because perhaps they saw the writing on the wall, perhaps they were fed up. It was a trying time for a lot of people.
Okay, yes. Thank you. I, what I meant to say was, so yes, those plans for the Marquette development came to city council, but city council never had a vote on it, and never...
That's correct.
Okay.
Because they withdrew, exactly.
All right. Well, I do have a comment, a side note, for the representative from, I guess, Mr. Patzelt, but I'm gonna just relate to you.
Okay.
And he can comment if he wants. You know, it's nice having a sister. I have two sisters, one of which is actually here in Geneva, house hunting, and she's staying with me right now. And word on the street is that if she moves here, my parents will move here. So everyone...
Can we stop the tape right now?
Everyone, please put in a good word for me. Yeah. There will be more of me coming. So Geneva has a sister city in France, and I think that the Harrington Inn needs a sister. So has the Shodin Family Foundation considered building something on the Millray site that reflects the size, design, and style of the Harrington? And kind of matching the height? Because that's something that came up during the charrette process in our small group breakout session, and I've heard it repeated a few times, maybe even once this evening. So that's just one of the questions that I had. Would anyone care to address it?
Mr. Patzelt, would you like to address that?
The short answer to your question is no. Up until the charrette process, the final days, we had not done any elevation, building elevation drawings of any, of any buildings. So if you're asking, I interpreted your question about architectural style. To me, architectural style has to do with the building elevation. No, we had not drawn or considered any building to be a sister building to the Harrington. Perhaps to educate you a little bit about the planning and through the charrette process and with working with an architect, it's something that we do all the time in our business, is that we have parking ratios, we have floor area ratios, we know apartments are certain sizes, and believe it or not, when you start to take those mathematical items and put them together, you end up having to, you can put in one floor of parking, and you can only get so many units, because you're not meeting your parking ratio. Even if you said, "Oh, you could build another 20 feet high," you can't, because you don't, you don't have the room to park it. So what do you do? You insert another layer of cake, which is parking. And we can't park and live on the same, on the same level. So now you've inserted a layer of parking. In order to pay for that parking, you have to add so many more units, you just can't add one or two units. So through the charrette process and through the architectural planning process, there's this constant battle of, you add a few more units, you have to add more parking, you have to take some away, you add some retail, you add some restaurant, all different parking ratios, and the plan changes. Once that plan starts to get close by the architect or the planner, then it's turned over to the financial side. And Bridget, as an example, and she sat in the corner, and she had to run financial spreadsheets, and she tries to determine, okay, it's $35,000 to build a parking space, how many apartments, you know, what kind of tax revenue do I need to generate to pay for the parking? You know, things, things of that, of that sort are going on in the background before you can get to a plan that truly says works. So I guess what I'm trying to say, it's not as easy as just saying, "Let's build another Harrington and make it look like that, and things will be wonderful, and we'll live happily ever after." It's unfortunately not, not that easy. And I think that the charrette process flushes that, flushes that out, and perhaps one of the disappointing things is maybe the council didn't learn that much through the charrette process, how complicated it is to do drawings and plan for a project that, as a developer, we do that all day long, you know, 52 weeks a year. We're trying to, everything from single-family lots to how many roads, to are the streets one-sided? How many parks can we put in? How many schools and impact fees? And all of those things go into creating what is the most financially feasible plan. Does that help you at all?
It helps me. It brings up a couple of other questions, though. What if the building site just focused on townhomes? So you have fewer units, and therefore, less parking needs.
That...
With a lower profile.
It's a very interesting comment or question. What is financially feasible? Is it something financially feasible if it shows $1 of profit? Is that then financially feasible? I think it is. Okay? Now, if you have something that shows $100 of profit, that one happens to be more financially feasible. Is that project a catalyst, because it simply generated $100 more? Is it, is it catalytic? Is it iconic? If we built very plain, Jane, no-frills townhomes and placed them there, is that something architectural style? It costs more to build a fancier elevation to those, to those buildings. So again, there's multitude of items being put into the equation, but yes, townhomes can be financially feasible. Does it generate what, is it something iconic that the council would like to see on that site? Would you like to see, I think, one of the sites, Rick, was that 22, 20, 20-some, 20-some townhomes? Is that a terrific project for that location? Perhaps you need to tell us. We don't think it is. And so that's why we were, we were against it. But maybe everybody in this room was saying, "Hooray, 22 townhomes, let's put them on that site." Another one that might be optional is five single-family homes. Just slice it like a loaf of bread and put five houses there. We're in the home-building business, and looks great. Is that catalytic? Is that iconic? Is that something that you'd like to see? That could be financially feasible. And I think, I think it is. So, but it, again, what, there's more to just, what are, what all are we trying to achieve? Iconic, catalytic, generating revenue for other, other uses within the TIF district? Nobody's asked us tonight, "Are we open to a private riverfrontage or public riverfrontage?" Up until partway through the charrette process, we were fixed. Damn it, it's a private riverfrontage today, and you know what? It's staying private. All of a sudden, working through the charrette process, kind of bite our lip and say, "You know what? Public is asking for public space." Now unfortunately, Alderman, I'm hearing, "Oh, it's public today, it's going to be public tomorrow." And I, and I understand that. But we, we moved. We moved off of being private riverfrontage space. But you're now getting public space. You're getting public space that's fully enhanced, and this project's paying for it. Wow, that's terrific. Now, when the comments come out? We heard the comments, "Yeah, it's all for you anyways." Oh, come on. You know, it's, it's difficult to, you think you're making headway, and all of a sudden, you're, you're still the bad guy in the group. So I think that, I believe in the charrette process. We've done them ourself. I think this was a good process to go through, but I think that the council didn't fully learn what the charrette is all about. And perhaps it's, next time you do a charrette, you stay there for the eight hours a day, and you get your, your head wrapped around every little issue that comes up, that you have to make a decision. And you got to keep making this, the decisions, and you have to keep moving on. And fortunately, right now, you get the summation at the end, and it's tough for you to say, "Boy, what happened in the middle?" Hopefully, I didn't go on too long there.
No, those are really constructive comments, so I appreciate you, Mr. Patzelt's willingness to share that with the council and with the public this evening. So, you know, we've heard from so many people here in this room this evening, and in our inboxes. It seems like the vast majority of people that I've heard from have very strongly made it clear that this plan, as it currently stands, is unacceptable to them, and would be a detriment to the city of Geneva that we all know and love. So I don't, I'm so confused right now. I don't know whether or not I can accept this, the parameters of this, because I don't know if it's gonna, I don't know how much it's gonna kind of put the city council in a bind, or how much leeway we actually have. If we're going to, with all due respect to Mr. Patzelt, if we're gonna kind of hear the same explanation, that, okay, well, we have to make it this big, otherwise, it's just not gonna be, it's not gonna meet the goals that were stated. So I don't know how much of a bind that's going to put us in. I really just wish I could get more clarity on that, and I don't know how to do it. So, I don't know, I'm just, there's just a lot going on here. So I just need to think about this, I guess.
Before I recognize Mr. Patzelt, ladies and gentlemen, it is past 10 o'clock, so forgive me for not announcing that earlier. Traditionally speaking, we do not, we do not host meetings past 10 o'clock unless the council chooses to do so. Without objection, we shall continue this meeting? No objection, we continue this meeting. I have to go on record asking that. So, Mr. Patzelt?
Remember, when we started this process, this was a partnership. It was a 50-50 partnership. Wasn't a 49-51. It's a partnership. What happens to us every day in partnerships? You're not always happy, right? You have to accept some things that perhaps you don't, you really don't like, but you understand that have to be that way. You have an option in front of you tonight, and that is, you can vote no, and it stops the partnership, stops the process, and limits your exposure. What are you left with? Left with a plan that, a plan that didn't work, and the site sits there, and in your mind, you can ask yourself, "Is Shodin gonna come back with a restaurant?" I can tell you that I don't think we're gonna come back with a restaurant. Are we gonna come back with a hotel? I don't think we're coming back with a hotel. Are we gonna come back with something else that you're thinking of, an open space or park? I don't think we're coming back with those. So are you real, by voting no, what, are you making any headway in the process? If you vote yes, at least you're willing to continue to walk down the path, on this mysterious path with this partner, to see where this leads. And we've been standing here saying, "We're ready to go. We'll walk down that path with you. We know we're responsible for 50-50, and if we pull the plug, just like if you pull the plug, we get to eat the other half." So think about the partnership. We're willing to go. Are you willing to go the next step? And I think that's really what the question you have to ask yourself about the vote, the vote tonight. We can, we can talk all about like the ceiling, the 60 feet, and the this and the that, but those are the parameters. That, so far, we, we have this engagement that we're moving down this road. We know an outline of this building that we're gonna go to. Are we happy with the architecture? Nobody asked. We're not thrilled. We think it needs some work. But you know what? That's part of the process. You got to continue to, continue to work on it. How did we get to the River North architecture? How did we get to the Datsun Place architecture? How did we get to the Harrington Place architecture? Repeatedly working, working the drawings and making improvements and enhancements. Do we think we can get there? Absolutely. I would encourage you, let's go, arm in arm, continue down the path and see where this thing leads.
Alderman McGowan still has the floor. Anything else? Your microphone?
That's all for me for now. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, you have not yet spoken. Do you wish to, sir? And I'll turn to Alderman Marks, who has not yet spoken. If he wishes to, then a second time around for Alderman Bruno, then Maladra, then Swanson.
You know, I sort of see this as not the end, but the beginning of a process. And, you know, yeah, I think tonight, what we're encountering is somewhat of a reality check. And, you know, we got a developer here prepared to spend $38 million. You know, any one of us in the room tonight could have acquired that property for, what was it, a million dollars, and developed it any way that you wanted to. But the thing is, is though, the reality is that we have a developer that's prepared to put his money into this site and develop it. Is it what we envisioned? Or, you know, tonight, are we coming to grips with the fact that the reality of the situation is, is that it has to be profitable, and it has to be something that serves the community long-term? The other thing is, is that this will generate tax revenue, it's a certainty. And, you know, we're looking at Geneva, and we're concerned about our downtown. What does another couple hundred people do to our retail business in the downtown? Our restaurants, our, our small businesses, our bars? Is that going to help enhance it, or is it going to be a detriment to our downtown? I think it's going to be an enhancement. You know, as a community, we've, we've planned, and we've discussed density in the downtown. This is an effort to increase density in the downtown. One of the things that our consultants told us is, is that we don't have enough density to support our retail, our commercial downtown. We get a lot of outside traffic as relates to our restaurants, but look at our small businesses downtown. You know, what is the future of retail? I think Shodin's have, they have a few properties available to rent, probably, if anyone's interested, but I think we need more foot traffic, and we need more residents in the downtown to support that. You know, I haven't always agreed with what the Shodins have done, but I think if you look at the long-term contribution to the community, I think a lot of the things that they've done turned out pretty well. You know, when I moved to Geneva in 1986, the population of Geneva was 99... You know, when I moved to Geneva in 1986, the population of Geneva was 9,900. Today, it's about 23,000. You know, I'm glad that I wasn't the last person that Geneva left in. You know, I really appreciate that fact because I've enjoyed this community. And, you know, I'm 70 years old, and I've looked at that site, I've driven by that site for enough years now, and I know the history that if you're not prepared to sit down and work with the Shodin family, you could be looking at it for another nine years, like the hospital site. And I, when I caught the train when I commuted to Geneva, or to, excuse me, to Chicago, drove by a long time, and I said, "What's ever gonna happen there?" You know, the charrette was designed to help prevent that from happening. You know, we had silos on the, on the west side of the river there that everybody thought were landmarks that we should preserve, but guess what? They're gone, and look what was developed. Something that was an asset, a real contribution to the community. So you could go on and on. I think, you know, I liked the lumberyard in the downtown because it was real handy getting off the train and buying a hammer or a pound of nails, but guess what? It's gone. But look what replaced it. And, you know, we've all found that, you know, it was very acceptable. Now, you might say, "Well, scale, and there's a lot of issues to be worked out yet." But remember, this is the beginning of a process and not the end. You know, the other thing I think we need to look at here is, we're gonna have a lot of construction on Route 38 east of the river over the next few years. If in fact we can get something resolved and something planned, we could have what I call coordinated disruption, because the east side of the river is going to undergo a lot of activity, construction activity in two, in 2020, 20, 20, 21, 2022. And if that could be coordinated, I think it would serve the community well. All of you that back up to, to Glengarry in the evening, you know, if we could shorten the duration of the inconvenience, I think it would be good. You know, I guess, I guess we have to have some level of trust in the process. And unless we give it an opportunity to proceed, and I'm, I'm prepared to support it this evening, I think we're doing a disservice to the community. And as far as the historic piece, that's the last thing I'll talk about. You know, the way it's, it's working out is, is that historic piece, the building, really will fall back to the public's responsibility, and, and this will give the community an opportunity to get involved and determine how that should be developed to complement the site. And, you know, the Shodins aren't really interested in redeveloping it, and as, as you looked at the charrette and the outcome of the charrettes, that's been really deferred back to the city in large part, and most of the, the plans that were advanced. And I think that's good, because we have people in the community that are interested in historic preservation, they have ideas for the redevelopment of that property or that piece of the property, and, and let's make something happen there that we can all take pride in. So, you know, usually, I'm the negative one. But on this one, I think that we've made an investment, you know, we've got one foot in the bucket, maybe we need to put both feet in the bucket and, and move forward. And I guess I have confidence that the outcome is something that we'll probably be happy with.
Ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Bruno has asked to be, oh, excuse me, Alderman Marks, then Alderman Bruno.
David, David, I've, I've got a couple of questions actually for, for you. Maybe you can help...
Mr. Patzelt?
No, David, DeGroot, please.
Mr. DeGroot?
David DeGroot. I'll start with David DeGroot. My understanding is right now, and clarify, I think we've, we have found through the charrette that the only thing that really works viably on there is residential apartments/townhomes, per se. So, it's served a purpose. I mean, it, it, it went through those calculations and everything. What do we gain now paying for the other half? What, what else do we get at the table? Because it has to go through the HPC, any plans unless they go commercial, and it has to go through the Plan Commission. I, I'm, I'm wondering if we're just underwriting a cost that would happen anyways, I guess is my question, without just being blunt about it.
I, I think we get to continue to, to work the problem as a partner, to look at public open space and access to the river that might not otherwise be provided with private development, to look at those pop-up shops or the seasonal spaces and try to incorporate those into the, into the project and create a draw that's more than just the residential units.
But can we still do that through the regular process? Through the zoning and through the HPC? I, that's what I'm trying to figure out. You see what I'm struggling with? I mean, I get it. To, for me at this point, that charrette served a purpose. It really did. It, it, it found out what could really viably work on that piece of property. I, I give it credit for that, there's no question. I'm struggling with, what now, does the city really get extra? We, we, whatever gets built now still has to go through the rest of those processes, whether we say yes or no tonight. So what, what additional is the city getting, is what I'm trying to reconcile in my mind.
I guess from that perspective, you're not, you're not gaining anything from this point forward, but I think you're getting to consensus through this process a lot faster than you would have without the charrette.
Okay. Fair, fair enough.
The example of Dodson Place, that was a nine-year negotiation back and forth between the city.
So you, you feel it would speed up the process?
I do.
Okay. And that, that's all I, I wanted to hear. That's really my question. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, Alderman Maladra, Swanson, Ruby?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a quick question for council, and I, it might be too, too in the weeds for you here, but we've got an envelope of 60 feet that we've got in this. If the Plan Commission says anything over 59 feet unduly impacts neighboring properties, and just says, "No, we're gonna cap it at 59," are we in violation? Do we then just eat the...
I think I understand the hypothetical. I, I do not believe that would be a violation of anything. I'm hopeful that one foot in that circumstance would be negotiated and concluded. The Plan Commission has a good history of working with developers and other stakeholders in finding compromise. In that instance, I'm pretty sure that wouldn't be the death knell. But to answer your question, that would not be violation of anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra, then Swanson?
So to pick up that thread, I think something we have to recognize is that the discussion tonight, as Ron said, is not evidentiary. Plan Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, they both consider issues within the context of some very legally-defined guidelines. I think the Plan Commission calls them findings of fact. What we're saying tonight is, has no context in that at all. If, if what we approve tonight ends up violating six findings of fact, it goes nowhere. So I think that we're not really handcuffing ourselves as much as we might think otherwise. Adding to that sort of intuitive approach to it is the evidence of what we've seen before. One of the members of the audience cited Dodson Place and the Harrington as examples of the great things that Shodin can do. Both of those were done, to one degree or another, in partnership with the city. Both of those were, to one degree or another, controversial in their day. And now today, they're cited at this meeting as being iconic and consistent with the Geneva character. Excuse me. The Dodson Place, as David pointed out, the city council passed its resolution defining its vision for what that could be, and that was just, to Dean's point, the beginning of a process that resulted in what we see today, and what we see today is different than what was proposed at the outset. So this is not drawing anything in ink. I was about to mix my metaphors. As far as what we're, what we get from continued investment, I like the way David put it, you know, we're speeding up the process. I look at it as an opportunity to be proactive with our views and inputting early in the process what we think would work well and what would not work well, rather than being reactive and, and pointing that stuff out in hearings later in the cycle. As for anything else I was gonna say, it was all gonna be the same as what Dean said, only way more eloquent than he put it. But to save time, I'll pass.
Alderman Swanson?
I, I have a little different take on that. I, I am very uncomfortable approving something tonight that I would not approve three months from now. And we're approving it tonight and then saying, "We hope that the HPC," or "We hope that the Planning Commission scales it down to something that the residents can live with." So my, my question is first, we will have another bite at this to say yea or nay...
Yes, sir.
...if it goes through at 60 feet?
If it goes through at any height.
Fine. So, so we do have a way of saying no in the future if we're still...
Which was my point to Alderman Caven. Ultimately, we are the, we are the last...
My other point is, I think the public space that we are receiving is too small, in my opinion, to be a catalyst for. Catalyst is not just, in my mind, dollars, but it is also a catalyst for people, for people to cross the bridge and have a reason to come to the east side. And I'd like to see a, a bigger public space to do that. So that, that would be part of what I envision. I'd, I'd like to see that, as, and as well as the scale being decreased somewhat. So, knowing that I have one more bite at this apple, if you will, in the future, I'm comfortable. I think this is such a, an important site for our downtown that we do need to proceed down the path hand-in-hand with our partner. And the money is well-spent to achieve what I hope is a satisfactory resolution, but I am uncomfortable offering parameters that are way above what I would be comfortable approving in the future. But I, I would support this measure. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
Just clarity on if, if this were to fail, would we be able to pursue building an apartment with the city and Shodin still be able to work together toward that prospect outside of this process?
It, it would be up to the owner of the property whether or not they would like to partner with us.
Okay.
We prepared to vote, ladies and gentlemen. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Just two...
Certainly.
Rather brief things I'd like to mention. I try to be a savvy shopper and when, and I try not to shop too much, but when I do see something, let's say it's something that I would like, and it's the last one of its kind, and it has maybe like a slight defect for whatever reason, but I think, okay, well, but I need to get this, you know, it's on my list of things to do today. I will ask to, to get a discount. I'll, I'll say, "May I please speak with the manager?" And, you know, this, "My son needs a water bottle, and this is the only one you have in the store, but it's, the cap is broken, but he's, you know, got a game, so can you knock off like 15%, 20%?" Usually the manager will say, "Yes, we can do that." So I would just like to put this out there. The, I feel that the charrette process fell short on a number of objectives, and it, it seems as though the Hitchcock Design Group has, has admitted as such, and I would just like to ask if they would consider giving a discount, knocking a percentage off the price that they initially charged. So maybe that sounds like a crazy question, but there's no harm in asking, unless our attorney tells me otherwise. So I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I, I would like you to kind of seriously consider that. So, and if you'd like more information on where I feel that the charrette process fell short, I'd be happy to provide that in writing later this week. Secondly, don't worry, this one won't be as painful. There is an, an item that, in the agenda that we're being asked to vote upon, and it is on page 133, number 5A, regarding historic landmark. This is in section one of the, I don't know, the parameters, I guess they're called.
The resolution?
And it's part of the resolution. Yep. So it just says, the, this is in, okay, regarding the historic landmark, "The historic landmark may be deconstructed and reinterpreted in a nearby location that fits in with the land use plan." I feel that that, there's a little bit of discrepancy as to how one might interpret that question. Is it giving absolute permission, and is that gonna be the argument later down the line? Is there a way that that could be just reworded a little bit so that it's a little bit more clear?
I mean, I'll defer to the city attorney with respect to linguistics, but I believe the operative phrase there that provides the greatest flexibility is "maybe."
As opposed to "it will be"?
It doesn't say "will be," correct. Doesn't say "it must be," doesn't say "it has to be," it says "it maybe."
Okay.
And that boils down to the ultimate review via the regulatory process.
Okay.
Plan Commission and Historic Preservation Commission.
As long as we have it here, it's publicly stated that, that's still, it's an option. It's like, it may or may not be. It's not that it absolutely will be. Okay. That's just something I wanted to clarify.
Fair statement, sir.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we take the roll call? Ladies and gentlemen, a simple majority vote of this council advances this matter. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Nay.
Clements?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Nay.
What's the total, Mr. Clerk?
Six ayes, four nays.
Six affirmative votes, four nays. The resolution has passed. We are under new business, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone from the audience, any new business for the benefit of the council or the community? From the dais? Motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? We've adjourned.